Good evening and welcome to the Board of Select meeting. It is 7:03 and we welcome you on this nice sunny day. It's a nice surprise to get some sun for a change. I hope you all enjoyed it. Because we're doing a virtual meeting, I'm going to read you the Governor's order to open the meeting pursuant to the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law GLC 30A, paragraph 20, as well as the Select Board's emergency order dated 3/16/2020. The Select Board will be using remote participation for this meeting. The audio of this meeting is being recorded and will be posted to the town's webpage within 24 hours in accordance with the Governor's emergency action requirement of keeping the public informed of actions during this meeting. I would ask that all participates remotely attending this meeting, please state your name for identification purposes each time you speak throughout the meeting. At this time, a roll call attendance vote will be taken. And so Mrs. Hein, are you present?
Present.
And Mr. Cronin.
Present.
And Mark is present. Okay, so the meeting is officially open and what we will be doing, we will, as each heading on the agenda happens, we will listen and then I will ask Mrs. Hein for any thoughts or questions she has or opinions, and then I will ask Mr. Cronin, and then I will have comments, and then we will open it up to the conference call and one person at a time will speak. We won't be interrupting anyone. And then Mrs. Hein will answer any questions and then Mr. Cronin, then myself of the conference callers. Okay? So with that, we will get started with a virus update from our emergency director, Michael Cassidy, who's also our chief of the fire department. Michael?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Michael Cassidy, Fire Chief, Emergency Management Director for the town of Holliston. If someone had asked me months ago where I was going to be on the evening of May 4th, it was my expectation that I would be gathered with registered voters and other town officials in the auditorium of the Holliston High School for our annual town meeting. Unfortunately, the worldwide pandemic has curtailed those plans for now. With one additional Holliston resident having tested positive for COVID-19, that brings the total number of cases in town to 39. With 19 cases having recovered and one COVID-related fatality, that leaves 18 active cases. By way of context, one month ago, when you asked me to start publishing local data to the website on a daily basis, we had a total of 15 cases, nine of which were active. Since then, we have not only published on a daily basis, but the state has begun publishing community-level data on a weekly basis. The number of cases in town more than doubled in the last 10 days of April. Last week, the Board of Health voted to require the use of face coverings when patronizing or working in essential businesses and when in public spaces where physical distancing could not be maintained. In the following days, Mayor Walsh issued a similar admonition for bicyclists and joggers in the city of Boston to wear face coverings, and Governor Baker issued an executive order effective May 6th requiring individuals to wear face coverings while in public when they cannot physically distance themselves. The elements of the Board of Health's order was based on similar orders issued by other communities and CDC guidance, and there is not an inherent conflict between the Holliston requirements and the subsequent gubernatorial order. Folks should use common sense. If they are going to their mailbox in an empty cul-de-sac, just because they step on the sidewalk in front of their home does not mean public officials are going to find them if they are wearing, if they are not wearing face covering. If however, they are in a public space and are in proximity to others, all parties should have face coverings. If they're alone in the woods, their face covering can be down around their neck. If someone comes around the bend ahead of them on a trail, both parties should reposition their face coverings. Unfortunately, we did not see consistent compliance with the face covering requirement over the weekend, and public safety officials continue to break up unauthorized gatherings of individuals in private and public recreation spaces. During conference call yesterday with mayors and managers, there's much discussion regarding the milestones required before we can reopen segments of the Commonwealth. One of the speakers is a member of the Governor's reopening advisory board, and she discussed the role of public health in reopening. Other speakers who are part of the Community Tracing Collaborative discussed contact tracing. There is still much work to be done before we are able to implement a new normal. One of the challenges includes the tenuous balance between the amount of risk citizens are willing to assume and the amount of privacy they are willing to give up. Many of our neighbors and friends have lost their jobs or had their hours reduced. They want to leave their homes. Some members of our community do not want to wear face coverings and feel the requirement to do so by the Board of Health or the Governor are an example of government overreach and restriction on civil liberties. When I first met with the Select Board on March 11th, I explained that we would need to implement mitigation strategies to minimize the spread of disease in our community. This is something as a community we have done for years with other communicable diseases such as measles, chicken pox, and meningitis. Unfortunately, the scope of this public health emergency required more widespread changes to our collective way of life. As we look forward to reopening and the recovering phase of this pandemic, it should be grounded in science, coordinated, and in regional equitable and prioritize health and welfare. As the Governor's reopening advisory board continues to develop their plan, I will be working with individual departments to identify what it could look like for their buildings to be open and how that impacts the way they offer their programs and services to the public. While we have learned that some government services can be delivered remotely, selecting a book from the stacks at the library or learning to swim in Lake Winthrop inherently require individuals to physically access our buildings and facilities. These are just a few examples of the myriad of ways that our residents interact with local government on a daily basis. Our approach will pursue parallel paths of both prioritizing the safety of our employees and making as many services available to the public as possible. Chief Stone and I have been working with school administrators to brainstorm how the class of 2020 can receive their diplomas in a safe ceremony which allows students and families to celebrate this significant milestone in a meaningful way which does not undermine the gathering size limitations imposed by the state or physical distancing best practices. We don't have a crystal ball which allows us to predict precisely which date we will transition to any of the next phases of reopening. The school administration is making decisions based on best information available, and when possible, we offer our input and feedback based on our training and experience and the best practices we are receiving from federal, state, and local officials, organizations, and professional associations. The logistics of graduation 2.0 is not something that can be engineered by an ad hoc committee. Just as the administration is involving public safety officials in their decision-making process, they have open lines of communication with class officers and parents. While the disappointment of not being able to experience what graduation has looked like in the past cannot be understated, I can assure you that school officials are doing what they have done for years, collaborating with other town departments to advocate for the social and emotional well-being of the students and their families. Likewise, we are committed to working with the Memorial Day Committee on a safe and appropriate ceremony to honor and mourn the military personnel who have died while serving the United States Armed Forces. When a phased reopening is initiated by the state and certain nonessential business sectors in our region are able to resume operations, we will be able to advertise extended drop-off hours at the recycling center on Marshall Street. This would be communicated across multiple platforms, including the town website, social media, and our community notification system. Thank you for the opportunity to update you on our coordination efforts and our response and recovery plans.
Thank you, Chief. Mrs. Hein, any questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. First, Chief Cassidy, I'm wondering if you could update the board on the advice you provided to the high school administration in terms of the most recent conversation and planning for graduation?
Um, I don't want to undermine their planning and their communication threads. I can tell you that we've brainstormed multiple options. We've looked at physical spaces that they have control over. We've talked about distancing requirements, but right now, the challenge that we're facing is the restriction on the number of people that can gather in any one place.
Okay. So I definitely received, well, full disclosure, I am the parent of a graduating senior. Separate of that, I've been receiving phone calls and emails all weekend, all today. And the sense that I get, I'm just sharing this with you, the sense that I get is that the parents of the graduating seniors are looking for the community to support celebration of the graduation, that it's a milestone, a profound milestone, and they're looking for community support. And I would, you know, my sense is that from day one, this has been about the community supporting one another, and there's no doubt about the fact that graduation is the capstone. It is the culmination of the success of our Holliston Public Schools and all the programs they offer and so on. So I just share that, that in your communications with the high school administration to support them and making the best decision, I trust your input. I think you're doing a great job advising them. I just would like you to carry that with you, that I think the parents are looking for that community support and are looking for creative ideas to be put forth, keeping in mind the public health and public safety needs that I know you're sharing with them. So I wanted to share that. And then I had a second comment, which is about demographic information on the positive cases in Holliston. And I received some communication from some residents also about wanting to know more. I see Representative Dykema's on the phone, so I, on the call rather, and didn't know if you could share your thoughts, Chief Cassidy, on the challenges to sharing that demographic information right now?
So we have zero demographic information reported to us through the Maven system. All we receive is an address. I don't know, male, female, age. The only data that I have to correlate with a specific address is our knowledge as to whether that's single-family, multifamily, group home, or assisted living or nursing home. But other than that, we have absolutely no level of detail beyond a physical address.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mrs. Hein? Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Cronin, any questions for the chief?
I do. Good evening, Chief. I'd like you to take the opportunity to give the town a sense of what the apparatus or the safe return to work policy might look like, Chief. A little bit of background, as you may know, over the last week, we've received some feedback from some employees who are concerned that when they return to work full-time here in Town Hall, there were some improvements that they desire to allow for a safe work environment, basically a barrier between the public and the employees here at Town Hall where they service them at the counters. Beyond that, though, I was wondering if you could give us a plan that gives some framework details for each of the facilities and the employees that work in them, hopefully through some collaboration with the department heads, specifically what you're going to recommend we do between now and that time. We're all hoping it will be soon, maybe weeks, perhaps short months, but there's an inevitability that when our employees return to work full-time and the public starts to use the services within the buildings, things have got to change. So I think we're looking to you to help us understand what that means and frankly, if there's any funding associated with it, help to identify that now. So is this something you can give us some introduction to this evening, Chief, and an idea of when we might see something more comprehensive?
Thank you. As I mentioned in my prepared remarks, I will be working with the department heads in the coming weeks, and that will be working in parallel with the Governor's reopening advisory board. With the specifics to the splash guards, I know that the facilities manager is working with individual departments. He's been taking measurements of individual counters in the different workspaces to ensure that there is a way for Town Hall employees and other departments at outlying buildings to interact with the public in a safe manner and yet to still have barriers available to them, whether it is going to look like a bank with a little slot through which someone can slide paperwork. Those specifics are being, still being engineered by the facilities manager. We've been working with regards to fire code issues, building code issues, and so I believe that the facilities manager would be working up any cost estimates as to those retrofits. But I would guarantee you that within the next two weeks, as I meet with individual departments and we talk about what does reopening look like and how can they interact with the public in a manner that's going to keep the employees safe as well as allow the public to still feel that they're getting a warm, interactive experience with our employees, I can tell you that by May 18th, my expectation would be I'd be able to roll that out for you.
Mr. Chairman, through you, I'd like to make a request to direct the chief to have that plan ready for our review on it before May 18th.
Do we have a second, Tina? Holliston Theta?
Hi. Thank you, Chief. I think that's the kind of document that's going to give a lot of people some sense of relief, that it's a thoughtful process, that it's not reactive, and we need to do what we have to in order to keep the workers and of course, the visiting public safe. Thanks so much. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, for the police chief this evening.
Chief, I would like you, if you could explain to the residents a little bit about the surge that our town is in and what your projections are based on information that you have, so that they can start to plan. And also, one of the things John brought up about department heads, some of these departments are run by elected officials, like the park commissioners, for instance. So if there's going to be some safety materials placed there, I think we need to get the park commissioners in that particular case in agreement with these decisions, although you do have authority to work with every department and to try to work in sync with every department. So I will let you answer those questions.
Certainly. Thank you. So with regards to the surge, yes, I would still say that we're in the surge. I'm not ready to declare yet that we've plateaued because we did have an additional positive case that was reported to us today through the Maven system. As for, I know one of the pieces of data that people are looking for is where are these cases occurring? And without violating any privacy regulations, I can tell you that the majority of cases in Holliston are at residential locations. Very few of them are at group or congregate care facilities. So our experience continues to be that it's community spread, which is why we continue to emphasize that when folks are in public spaces, they need to continue to utilize face coverings because although they may feel well, there's a large percentage of people that testing has shown have been carriers of the disease while they've been asymptomatic. With regards to working with elected boards and other oversight groups that have authority over departments, we've got a long history of working collaboratively with the Council on Aging, the park commissioners, the town clerk, the Board of Library Trustees, school committee. I'm confident that any reopening plan that we have that is going to be department-specific and location-specific will be done in a very collaborative manner, and it's not going to just be done by fiat, we'll be working closely with individuals from those departments.
Good. I just wanted to make sure they were inclusive with the decision-making process.
Absolutely.
And so now, we will ask our state representative Carolyn Dykema to maybe give us some more insight on the state level, and then we'll open it up to residents on the conference call to ask questions of whomever they desire. So Carolyn? Are you there, Carolyn?
Yes, unmute the call.
Oh, Carolyn, you need to unmute.
Hi.
There you are. Thanks.
I think I'd know this by now. It's great to be here. I want to thank the board for the opportunity to come here tonight when I was having some conversations with board members before the meeting. I knew there was an interest in getting as much information as possible from the state about specifically budget planning in the coming, not only fiscal year 20, which is this year, but of course fiscal year 21, which both the town and the state are preparing to address in the coming months. So as you know, there's a lot of uncertainty around, you know, all of the things right now, both at the town and state level, and we're all trying to move our way through some of the decisions that we have to make around finances as best we can, knowing that we have some really imperfect information. But that said, I want to hopefully here tonight, give you the best information that hopefully the guide you here as best we can in helping you put together your financial choices over the coming months. So I thought I'll just go through kind of a brief presentation here, and then we can follow up if the board has any specific questions. First of all, there's a number of pieces of legislation that are relevant to this conversation that the legislature has passed over the last several weeks. The first is a bill that would make it easier to postpone town elections. I know many towns have taken advantage of that. Elections are normally held in the spring, and there was a legal mechanism that needed to be changed, allow that to be changed without going to court. So that was the first bill. Second one allowed for a continuing 30-day postponement of town meeting. So knowing that town meetings are held in April or May of the spring, and that they would be very difficult to hold them given social distancing rules, this allows the town to postpone until the end of the state of emergency town meeting dates with the idea that this may actually go beyond the time established of the budget. Knowing that, the legislation also allowed for provisions for how the town would move forward with financing if it could not adopt a budget and if town meeting were not able to be held in time for that to be done in a timely fashion. There are a number of provisions to that, one of which is the town would be able to continue with a 1/12 budget until that point in time when town meeting could be arrived at and a more formal budget could be adopted. Third, and this is hot off the presses, if you will, the Senate just today passed new legislation related to town meeting, which decreases the number of people that constitute a quorum. So normally, I believe Holliston's town meeting quorum is 100, I believe. Is that right?
Yes.
The Board of Selectmen could vote to decrease that number to as low as 10% of the pre-existing quorum in order to allow the town to hold the town meeting and pass a budget, with the one requirement, obviously, that it be publicized by video and that the rest of the public would be able to see that event and, you know, participate visually to the extent possible, as well as social distancing within the meeting itself. So that's sort of the lay of the land legislatively, giving, you know, you as the town tools to manage the timeline around budgets. The state budget obviously is, and local aid figures figure significantly into your town budget, so obviously I know that's of interest. And there are two budgets that are relevant. The first is the fiscal year 20, which ends on June 30th, which is currently the budget we're under. And the second is fiscal year 21, which would start on July 1. So first, for fiscal year 20, there've been a lot of questions that I've been getting about 9C cuts. I know the town is familiar, we had to make 9C cuts, which are essentially mid-year cuts to the town budget, off-cycle cuts that are very difficult for the municipalities to absorb for obvious reasons. It seems that the governor is pretty committed not to making any mid-year 9C cuts this year, which is good news. That is thankfully due to, in part, to the fact that we have a pretty large rainy day fund at the state level. We've been able to build that back up since the recession to about $3.5 billion, which is an all-time high. So we'll be relying at least partially on that, I assume, to make sure that we hold municipalities harmless through the end of the current fiscal year. Fiscal year 21 looks a little different, very uncertain. As you know, the way the process usually works is that in January, the governor issues his budget, and last week, the House, under normal circumstances, would have passed our House budget. We are obviously not there. And not only that, we just now, tomorrow or Wednesday, will be voting to allow the House to operate in virtual formal sessions, which does create more opportunities to pass legislation, but does not deal with the core budget concerns. So the way that the budget process works is we start with a consensus budget number, which is the foundation number that's used by the governor, the House, and the Senate to build the budget off of. What we are hearing from economists who came to present to House Ways and Means several weeks ago is that the potential shortfall in the fiscal 21 budget is anywhere in the neighborhood of $2 billion to $6 billion. And just within the last few days, I've been hearing more in the $4 billion to $6 billion shortfall neighborhood. So that is, you know, give or take on a $31 billion state budget normally, at least for the state revenue portion, that's about 15% of the normal revenues that we're looking at, that would be cut off the top. So one of the questions that we're looking at, obviously, is federal funding and how much federal funding is going to be coming in to fill that loss in funds, and when are we going to get that federal information? The economists that presented were saying that effectively, we're not going to know what the final numbers are and be able to come up with a new consensus revenue number to work from until more than likely this summer, because all of the revenue projections are driven by the facts on the ground and the progress as we move through the public health crisis and when we can start reopening the economy. So until we know when the economy will reopen and what that plan looks like, until we start seeing a significant decrease in numbers on the public health side of people that are infected, we're not going to be able to have, even start, the budget process. So I suspect, while we don't know for sure, that the state will probably start fiscal year 21 with some kind of interim budget, you know, similar to what the towns might be looking at, until we're at a point where we can not only establish what the likely revenue number is going to be, but what kind of federal dollars we're going to have that could potentially complement what those needs are, and then we'll be able to get a better sense of timing on an actual budget. There has been some limited conversation that I'm hearing about a potential local aid resolution that might give cities and towns some numbers that they might want to work from. I'm, I wouldn't, I wouldn't plan on that, and certainly something that if more information becomes available, I'll make sure the town is aware of that. In terms of how the town should proceed, I guess the guidance, you know, Department of Local Services, I know, John, you've participated in some of those meetings, they're putting as much information out as they have to cities and towns with respect to planning. I would suggest what we're calling scenario planning, which is essentially take a best, you know, case scenario for revenues, a worst-case scenario, and then maybe a few scenarios in between, and get essentially a sensitivity analysis to, depending on what the numbers that come out of the state, what is that going to do to impact the town and have several scenarios to be able to work with, so that once we get the numbers, the town will be able to move ahead with the most appropriate scenario. And have several scenarios to be able to work with so that once we get the numbers, the town will be able to move ahead with the most appropriate scenario. So on that note, I will just open it up to questions and respond as best I can.
Okay, Mrs. Hine, do you have any questions for the state rep?
Thank you very much for that update. That's extremely helpful information. I know it's not clarifying information, but it's definitely guiding information and very much appreciate that. Do you have a sense from the conversations that you're in as to whether or not state grant programs are going to be affected or other state programs that might be affected? Are you hearing any kind of conversation or discussion about that? Like, for example, Holliston participates in the MVP grant program. You know, conversations being had about what those types of programs might look like in fiscal year 21 in terms of funding and honoring commitments that have been made with past grant awards and things like that?
There, I'm not aware of any specific conversations about grant programs. I guess I would just say broadly that there is nothing that is off the table in terms of impacts. So I would say pretty much anything could potentially impact, be impacted more so in fiscal year 21 than fiscal year 20. So funding that the town is expecting to receive in this fiscal year, if there are such funds, whether grant or otherwise, those I expect will probably be fine, but the fiscal year 21 not necessarily.
Okay, thank you. That's it. Thank you.
John, any questions?
Yeah, just a couple. First, I want to extend my sincere appreciation to the representative. I wanted to say she's incredibly accessible and very ready to help our town in any moment's notice. So thanks for joining us, Carolyn. I really appreciate it. Just to confirm some of the things you were saying, so that we can sort of get some clarity on what the view ahead looks like. FY20 looks reasonably stable, given the fact that any cuts to the remaining local aid would require legislation, i.e. the nine C. And that's unlikely, given some of the remarks we're hearing from A and F and other sources. Would you agree, Carolyn?
I agree.
Yeah, I think people are breathing a little easy on that side. FY21, if I hear you correctly, the legislative process is not yet engaged to produce a model for FY21. You're still waiting for the pieces of the revenue projections and I think also some impact from the Federal Stimulus Act to come into place before those plans become reality. In that case, can you confirm that the timeframe you're reasonably thinking about is that the conversation will probably start in June and result in some kind of a either one twelfth or a full-blown budget sometime after the fiscal year starts, likely leading to a period of time in FY21 when we're all looking at one twelfth budgets? Is that reasonable, Carolyn?
You know, everything, I will preface this by saying that of course, you know, nothing is guaranteed at this point. It is increasingly looking more and more likely that we will have some kind of interim budget at the state level going into fiscal year 21. We will not have what would be our traditional confirmed budget by June 30th, you know, as we usually do. How far that goes beyond July 1, I think is the bigger question. You know, will it be in July or will it be later in the fall? And will the legislature have to come back and extend its session? It's usually, we're usually done with session on July 30th. There's talk about extending that into August and potentially September if we are not yet able to get a budget done.
The federal response to date includes a number of different bills, including the CARES Act. And as I understand it, Massachusetts received about two point seven billion dollars for eligible costs this year and into FY21. Is it, is it safe to say that that money is more for reimbursements rather than federal money that's acting as though it was stabilizing our economy?
There's a lot of pieces to that and there are a lot of different needs, but I would say yes, by and large, that funding is going to reimburse for COVID-related costs.
The Mass Municipal Association reports that Congress is slated to come back to work starting today to work on legislation for stabilization. So I guess if I had to, if I had to wonder, the, any effect of federal aid to help states cope is weeks away before it lands in the local treasuries. And I'm harkening back to the 2008 crisis when funds known as ARRA grants came our way to help stem the tide of some lost revenues and so forth. So I guess from where I stand, Carolyn, I think that planning for FY21 is still very much in its infancy. People are still waiting for the clarity of revenue projections to come into focus. And even though we have slated town meeting to occur on June 15th, I think, you know, Mr. Chairman, I think it's something that we're going to have to monitor very closely and possibly take steps to begin planning for a contingency. But, you know, this is, this is a very difficult time for a lot of people, including our elected officials, because we're all waiting on the same thing. And I wanted to again extend my thanks to Carolyn because she's been absolutely phenomenal, being very accessible and helpful to us as we try to get to the bottom of these answers. So thank you. Thank you, Carolyn.
Yes, Carolyn, and I too want to thank you for all the communication and all the emails and also the way you've been emailing the public to try and help them through this crisis as well. It's been said many times that you have a huge heart, so thank you for all that you do for the community. I was talking with Senate President Karen Spilker's assistant the other day, Pooja. And she said pretty much what you said is that we're really not going to know about state funding capabilities until sometime over the summer, which would be her guess too. And I guess it's just, there's just no concrete date as of yet, which obviously makes it difficult for towns and cities to plan their budget. But she and I talked about the one twelfth budget option that the governor has allowed. And that seems to be the answer for the towns and cities, that it will give you some flexibility during a period of time where we do not have concrete dates of information. Would you agree with that?
I think it's, I think a lot of towns are probably going to do that. What I would suggest is that obviously other communities are going through the same conversation, right, Mark? You know, dealing with the same limited amount of information and trying to chart their way through a budget into next year. There are two resources. I know, as I mentioned, John has been in touch with the Division of Local Services, which is getting a lot of information out to communities. And on some of these phone calls, there's an opportunity to hear from other towns and maybe what they're doing and how they're approaching this. And I think that dialogue is very helpful in kind of working through some of these questions in a bigger context and then from the learnings of some other communities. And I would say that the Mass Municipal Association is also a really helpful resource. They are constantly reaching out to communities across the state to hear what they're facing. And they really do a good job trying to, as best they can, put forth what they recommend as best practices. And so one of the things that they discuss in their meetings with communities is this notion of scenario planning. And then we really don't know when we're going to have numbers, but you know, to the extent that the town can now start thinking about which, which funding sources are most important to the budget? And then what is the maximum and minimum impact likely on those particular sources? And then as we get closer to that, you know, to the deadline, when you need a budget, you can make a decision about, you know, whether you want to go one twelfth or, you know, if the public health situation improves somewhat and you want to bail yourself of this option to reduce quorum at town meeting to ten percent. And the town is comfortable with that and the board is comfortable with that, well then maybe as you get into June, you know, maybe you could have a town meeting to do just a bare bones budget to get you, you know, get you through an interim period that may be different than a one twelfth. So there are some different options and I think a lot more conversation is going to be happening in the coming weeks. But I think one thing for sure that the town can do now is start this scenario planning, kind of the best case, worst case, to know where the soft spots are and to be able to watch those revenue, those key revenues that you know are going to have a big impact on the town's budget.
Right, great, thank you. And now we'll open it up to the residents and the conference call. Just remind you to say your name before you speak. Thank you. We'll take the first one. And you can tell us who the question is for, whether it's from the state rep or one of us or our emergency director.
Mark, this is Matt Pavinsky. I'm a newbie on 95 Ovalt Drive. Do I just, is this the way to do it?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, sorry. I had a question and a comment, so thank you first for everybody's efforts in supporting in the health crisis. Thank you to the chief for all his leadership. I just had a question in regards to the chief's statement about the wearing of masks and the potential conflict with what the Board of Health said on April 29th in regards to the mask to be worn in all public areas. And it didn't include, and I support either way, the common sense measures that people can put it down if they don't see anybody around them. So there are folks taking it very seriously. And then there are folks using what we refer to as the common sense approach. And now we have residents arguing with each other. So I'm just wondering if there's a potential to have some clarity either by the Board of Health or the chief. And I don't know.
Sure, I'll jump in. Chief Cassidy, Fire Chief and Emergency Management Director. Yeah, Matt, thanks for your comments. It was never in the intention of the Board of Health to make someone wear a mask when they are alone on their street, on their sidewalk, getting their mail or in their front yard. The intention has always been when you can't maintain physical distancing, you need to have face coverings. And that's consistent with the way the governor put out his order last week, which goes into effect on Wednesday. So if folks comply with the governor's order, they will be in compliance with the intent of what the board voted last Tuesday. And then the board's order on last Tuesday night also had several other elements related to, well, people are going into businesses, while people are working in essential businesses and can't maintain social distancing as well as when they are in common spaces, either residential or other public spaces.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Matt, did you, was part of your question to try to get this information clarified, maybe up on the town website to clarify for residents?
So I don't know the logistics of that, but it would make a lot of folks more comfortable if that was more clarified the way that the chief expressed it.
Chief, is that something you can do?
We can absolutely issue clarification on the website. I would point out that in the communication that we sent out over the Blackboard Connect messaging system on Friday afternoon, I did phrase it in such a way that it was when they're in public and can't maintain physical distancing. But we can, we can certainly seek to put some additional clarification on the town website. I do have authoring rights to that.
That'd be great. You know, some sort of a simplification of that might be, might be helpful if you can do that.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you, folks. I really appreciate it.
Any other questions, Matt?
That is it.
I understand Mr. Campbell would like to ask a question.
Thank you. Good evening, folks. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, yep, hi, Mark.
I just first off want to say thank you so much for bringing this group together. It's really a treat for us to be able to have a voice. And especially congratulations to all the seniors, the class of 2020, the graduates. And also I want to thank Ms. Dykema for all the Facebook posts and the updates you've been providing for us. It's just been remarkable stuff. It's, it's a treat to see that every day, you know, just coming across the feed and saying, okay, it's a touch point for a lot of us that we, you know, just can rely on. So the two things I wanted to bring up, excuse me, real quick. This is in regard to the seniors, the class of 2020. My daughter is graduating this year, as are a lot of other folks here. Two things I wanted to just question, and I'm not even sure who this would be raised with. The first one is, a question came up about an idea that I put on Facebook about utilizing the telephone poles in the way that we do the signage for the veterans. Is it possible to utilize the poles and put signage up to pay tribute to the seniors? That's one question I have. The other question I have, and this might be for the chief or it might be for the school administrators, I don't know. Somebody was looking, I know Tina had mentioned something about just creative ideas for graduation. The one thing that I've talked a few people here is possibly utilizing the school, Holliston High School parking lot and having sort of a drive-in theater style graduation ceremony where students stay in their cars. They line up in accordance in spaces. And then a brief presentation could be given by the administration on the grass or something to that effect. It's just an idea, just throwing ideas out there, not even sure who I would talk to, whether the chief could comment on safety or how that might be orchestrated. But those are my two thoughts for the graduating seniors. I hope this came across clearly. Thank you so much and I'll mute myself so you guys can speak. Thank you.
Creative ideas. Chief, do you want to respond?
Absolutely. Thanks, Mark, for your thoughtful comments. And I had seen your post online with regards to the utility poles, the same way that we have honored those in the armed forces. With regards to the drive-through option, that is one of the types of scenarios that we have discussed with the school administration. A lot of this is dependent on where we are with the state with regards to gathering size limitation. If we are still limited to 10 people, then the drive-through option that you've mentioned would preclude having everybody present. It might require people in shifts based on the alphabet and their last name. A lot of that is going to depend on the loosening of those restrictions and whether we go from 10 to 25 or 50 or 100, because your daughter's class is one of the larger classes we've had in recent years. So we really need the size to be at least 250 to be able to comfortably entertain the entire class concurrently. But again, nothing is set in stone right now. We've had very good discussions with school administrators and there have been a lot of creative solutions that have been offered. And we continue to try and use the touchstone of what the state regulations are and try and bounce those off of whether or not they would be feasible or whether they're still unrealistic.
Thank you, chief. I appreciate that. You guys are doing a great job. Thank you. And the only other thing I'll add to that, chief, and you can pass it on, is that I can probably speak for most of the parents of the class of 2020 students and say that we are at the disposal to volunteer in any capacity. Just put the word out and I'm sure the majority of us will be there in a heartbeat. So thank you all very much. I'll take myself and mute myself here.
Thanks, Mark. I know that there's been a very quick response and rapid response from the class of 2020 parents anytime emails go out. So we're glad to know you're standing by, ready to help.
Thank you very much, Mr. Campbell, for your creative ideas. I'm sure it'll help. And anyone else from conference call would like to ask a question?
Mark, this is Vin Murphy. Can I ask a question?
Yes, Vin.
Representative Dykema, this is Vin Murphy from the Finance Committee. I have a question. How much do you say was in the rainy day fund? And the reason I'm asking is, we're in a better position than a lot of towns, as maybe you know. But most of our monies come from taxes, not businesses, but residential server. And a good thing, our biggest weakness we foresee is with local aid. So I'm just trying to get a sense of, the goal, I'm sure, is to try to preserve the local aid. However, reality being what it is, you only have so much money. So how much do you have and how much do you think at the end of the day, do you want to keep in local aid so that you're not going to go and spend it all at once? do you want to keep in local aid so that you're not going to go and spend it all at once?
So there are a couple of things, Vin. So I think, so there's $3.5 billion in our rainy day fund. I expect that a lot of that may go to holding communities harmless for fiscal year 20. I think the bigger question is around fiscal year 21, which is what you're also looking at at the municipal level. And there really, I would agree with you that local aid is always prioritized by the legislature for obvious reasons. We want to support our cities and towns as the priority for us. So, you know, school aid, local aid, all of that will be prioritized. But that said, if we're looking at a four to six billion dollar gap that is not filled to any significant degree by federal funding that may come in, we're going to have to make some really hard choices. That's a significantly bigger gap than we were looking at even during the recession back in, you know, nine and 10. So the factor of two or three times the decrease in revenues. So again, we're all kind of just hoping that we'll be on the smaller side of that gap rather than the larger side. But as far as being able to give you any indication now for planning purposes, I really think what we've talked about tonight is about as comfortable as I am giving any information. We're all really just, once we see the economy is really able to be, you know, to start moving seriously down that road, we'll have a much better indication. But while right now that is still so much an open question, we can't even begin to know when revenues are going to start to rebound.
Thank you.
Any other questions from residents? Any at all? Okay.
Ann Louise has a question.
Ann Louise, you have a question?
Yeah, forgive me. I just wanted to wait till everyone else had an opportunity to speak.
Can you state your address?
Yes, I can. I'm so sorry. Ann Louise Hanstead, at Cassandra Lane. I think as many of you know, I'm a member of the school committee. But I'm also one of the two class parents for the class of 2020. And I believe Hillary Freely is also online here masking herself as Jim Freely. So mostly, I just wanted to say thank you. And I think this is really important. Not only, I'm going to start with Karen because I echo Mr. Campbell's comments, all of them. I won't go through all of them, but every day I read your updates and I so appreciate all your support. And the communication coming from your office has been tremendous. So thank you. As I work through the school budget with the budget subcommittee and with the committee at large, that communication has been essential. And we've been, week to week, we meet every week now. And we're evaluating what's coming from the select board, from the finance committee. So we meet on Wednesdays, and it's just, the communication has been very fluid and helpful. So thank you very much. And to Chief Cassidy and Chief Stone, I want to thank both of you as well. And I want to point out to the public that our emergency management works so closely with the schools, with Dr. Jackson and Principal Bottomley. So this is a daunting task to try to figure out how best to acknowledge our seniors and help them celebrate while keeping everybody safe. And it's a tricky challenge. I know they have been working behind the scenes, and that's probably the piece that all the parents aren't naturally as aware of, the number of conversations that have been happening and how they're trying to work through the different scenarios. Since Mr. Campbell, the scenario that you proposed, which isn't quite a drive-through, I think you were thinking more of a drive-in, if you will. That is one of the options that the students have put forth, as well as a number of others. The real challenge that our seniors are faced with and that our administration is facing is a timing, and no one has a physical ball. You know, the students are prepared to wait it out, if you will, hopeful that if they wait as long as midsummer, that some of these restrictions might lift, allowing them to have some sort of in-person gathering, maybe in small groups. They don't know. It's very unpredictable. But for other reasons, it might not be possible. And so, you know, Principal Bottomley has, I think, a lot of burden on her shoulders trying to make this decision. And she's doing it with an informed perspective from our emergency management professionals and taking the student voice into account as well. And for all of you who may be watching in the parent survey that we put out, we are sharing those results. So we have heard you loud and clear. We understand that you as well are looking for some sort of in-person gathering in the midsummer timeline. Whether that's feasible and possible, et cetera, is still the open question. So we are looking to our emergency management professionals to help us through that. And the schools are taking this seriously, and Dr. Jackson and Principal Bottomley really are trying to do the right thing. So just do that. And Hillary Freely and I are, we're there at their disposal as well and have offered to help in any way that we can. Finally, I want to thank not only all of the parents who have stepped up. It's extraordinary. You know, with one email, we had a number of parents stepping in for a special activity for our seniors that will be unveiled later this week, maybe. But another, in other ways as well, just offering to be there in any way that they could, not only physically but financially. And then we had a number of businesses reach out. And I think it goes without saying, every small business is struggling right now. But the small businesses in Holliston reached out to say, we want you to know, we appreciate the seniors and what they're going through. And if you need our help as well, you have it, and you're not alone in this. You have a community behind you. So to those of you in the small business community of Holliston, I just wanted to say thank you as well because that really touched us. So thank you. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ann Louise. Any comments from anyone?
I had one quick comment before we go. I just want to know how Vin got down to the Caribbean.
I know, really, huh? Any other questions from the residents from the conference call? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on to the agenda. Mrs. Hine, we have a warrant.
Tonight's warrant is for $2,115,977.24, of which $167,304.16 is town payroll and $1,357,046.21 is the school payroll.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those motion carries. Thank you. And public comment, Mrs. Hine?
So I'd like to share some sad news tonight. Our Youth and Family Services Director, Jaclyn Weiner, lost her father to COVID-19 a week or so ago, about two weeks ago in April. We all appreciate how much, how Jackie continues to serve Holliston families, many of whom are dealing with their own losses due to the virus. Jackie is a pillar of strength through this crisis and is all the more worthy of our appreciation given her personal circumstances. So again, I just really wanted to profoundly thank Jackie for her service to the community. Goes without saying that we all offer our condolences to her, but really wanted to recognize her for the work that she does, especially during this difficult time, both for her own clients and for herself personally. And yeah, that's all I had. Thank you.
That's very sad. Well, we'll talk to Mr. Ritter about getting a card out to Jackie from all of us, huh? John?
I just wanted to echo the comments made by Mr. Bob Malone on behalf of this board. This town would like to recognize Firefighter Appreciation Day, pass along to all our volunteers and all firefighters everywhere for the great work they do every day. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. And anyone else have a public comment from the audience? State your name first, and then you may speak. Any public comments? Oh, okay. We do not have a town administrative report tonight as Jeff is resting tonight. So we will move on to budgets. We would like to talk with, and have Jay Talman talk to us about 112 budget for FY21 and give us some explanation about it, if you would, Jay.
Sure, thank you, Mark. And following up on Representative Dykema's comments, where it looks increasingly likely like a lot of towns may go with this option, and there's a couple of reasons. The first is logistical over town meetings and that towns are really concerned that they'll be able to safely hold an annual town meeting. As you know, I'm the moderator in my town, and we're having a hard time envisioning it happening, although the new bill that the House passed and is hopefully heading to the governor may allow us to do it out of town, which will be of some help because we could do it at a regional high school field house, which we may be able to do. So there's some relief there and that, but still, there is a significant concern that we may just not be ready to safely hold the town meeting. So that would mean that you'd be in a 112 posture. The other reason, of course, is that there's a lot of financial uncertainty as we head into this year. So my concern about the 112 budget, and I think there's a lot of good elements to it. First of all, it allows for the select board to rapidly and efficiently budget that doesn't go through the normal process. Now, that means it goes through a less democratic process, but it does allow you to work with a base of last year's budget, make the necessary adjustments with whoever you choose to get advice and counsel from, your department heads, the schools, even the finance committee, but then to craft your budget and then get it up to DOR. So there is some expediency there, and you're able to work with something without so much time and so many voices hindering a bare bones budget that you would need to get off the ground for FY21. My concern is where DLS is on this right now. The special legislation said that the director of DOR may promulgate guidelines or regulations to assist in the development of a 112 budget, or at least to lay out the process by which they will review your 112 budget. They have not done that yet. And I would say the time is getting close to where we want to see at least the outlines of that. Furthermore, their guidance documents on the 112 budget legislation, which was a section of the special legislation, said, their guidelines say that they will do it and that they expect communities to follow it, even though the legislation says they may do it. So there's still some unknowns out there as to how critically they will do it, what the process will be, the paperwork, and what areas of the budget they will want you to focus on or not focus on, how robust it will be, how you might consider increases above the baseline created by the FY20 budget and other similar situations. I know anecdotally that officials at DOR are no fans of doing a 112 budget. I think there's good reason for that. No one likes acting on serious budget matters by fiat, and there are little concern about the process. That's no different than the closest analog we have to a 112 omnibus budget, which is a 112 regional school budget, which is a process that happens in some communities that have regional schools. DESI doesn't like doing those either. It requires them to put their nose into a purely local manner. So we're a little bit stuck right now, and I'm waiting to see. And I know that they're trying to develop some of these things, and they've got a lot on their plate, certainly. But I do think it probably pays to at least wait a couple more weeks, or at least until we know a little bit more about what DOR is going to do. But it looks like a reality for several of the towns I represent, sir.
Especially where the state is, as Representative Dykema said, is probably going to have a partial budget to start out itself.
But we have, obviously, there are fixed costs that we have regardless of how underwater we are or not underwater we are. And it was very purposeful. The original idea for a 112 budget when it came up was essentially just go with last year's budget and then divide it by 12. And then towns quickly reacted, and MMA was instrumental in this. You can't do that because of the inflationary factors as it applies to healthcare wages, other material and operating costs that go up every year. So they were smart enough to add to that budget at least 1/12 of last year's budget. I mean, the schools have to run on a certain budget. We have salary obligations that just aren't going away, regardless of how much trouble we're in. Now, the allocation of where those funds come from could be a separate question, or there may be some austerity measures that ultimately are built in to some of this through DOR or further legislation. There may in fact be further legislation on this, who knows? But as it is, you could look at your bottom line right now and know that there's so many of the costs that you have to go on for FY21 are just fixed in nature and in fact went up by a predictable amount. And you're going to have to account for those in your 112 budget. I mean, I do think it's not a bad idea to be thinking about it. Where could you save? Where do you need to do increases now? Because it's going to come fast and furious. But it's, I would hate to have you do a whole lot of work and then for DOR, for good reasons, to change the playing field that you're playing on.
Thank you, Jay. Do we have any questions, Mrs. Hine?
Yeah, Jay, I'm curious. The 112 budget, are we obligated to use fiscal 20 numbers? So could we go below, so right now our finance committee has asked departments to prepare a 0% guideline, which is essentially, you know, fiscal year 20, just for fiscal year 21. Are we obligated, if we do a 112 budget, to fund minimally in that 1/12 for the month? Or do we have some latitude to go below fiscal year 20 1/12 amounts?
Well, the language of the statute is odd, Tina, in that it says not less than 1/12 of the prior, you know, not less, it says during the month of July, not less than 1/12 of the total budget approved by the town or district in the most recent fiscal year pursuant to a plan approved by the Board of Selectmen, Town Councilor District, et cetera, et cetera. I don't think anyone over at the state is going to lose any sleep if you end up going lower than what last year's budget was. I do caution you going part of the way because the way the process is set up is that budget is going to operate as your omnibus budget until such time as you have to get to town meeting. So while I don't think that anyone is going to necessarily at the state stop you from going with something that's less than the bottom line, you add an FY20, you are going to have to ultimately fund all the services that you have. And if you have to hit another bump up, then we've got to play catch-up with the month or two that we were doing 1/12 at a lower level, too. So there's a lot of moving parts here. But it's an astute observation because they do say not less than.
Okay.
I think what they really mean is you can go in excess of what it was last year. And I think that was a concession won by MMA primarily after they heard from a lot of municipal actors.
Okay, I have one second question, a last question. I was on a call last week with the Metro West Regional Collaborative. Representative Dykema referred to this, I think, as well, that an interim budget could be a three-month budget. It doesn't have to be a 1/12. Am I understanding that correctly? I feel like some of the towns that were on that MWRC call last week were contemplating, vocalizing that they were going to be possibly looking at something more than just 1/12, more like, again, three months.
Yeah, let's be, I want to be clear on this. You're not developing a monthly budget. You're developing a whole budget. You're developing a whole budget and you're just slicing it into twelfths for as long as you need it, probably with even a per diem until the, the time when the town meeting actually gets together, whether that's July second or August sixteenth. It, it regardless, it's just the, it's just the division. So you could think of it in clumps, but again, then you're going to eventually catch up with it when you are able to hold your annual town meeting and meet your obligations under state law.
Okay. That's it, thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Good evening, Jay. Um, with regard to the D L S guidelines for this, um, type of opportunity, a couple of things. First, as Carolyn mentioned, I've been on a couple of their calls recently and they, I have to say their expression of the use of this tool to local communities has been encouraging. Um, they, they talked very efficiently about how they would receive the one-twelfth requests from the, uh, from the locals, um, that they would not try to get in the way of what local communities want to move on as long as it met certain relatively modest criteria, they would, um, they would try to turn around the certifications very quickly. There was no, no sense that I got from them that they wanted to avoid, uh, communities, uh, wholesale going down this road. Uh, but nevertheless, I wanted to find out if you've heard, um, about when specific guidelines would be available for communities to follow. You've articulated some of the thoughts and ideas of what's been expressed, but have you heard anything about when communities can expect those specific guidelines to emerge?
I, I haven't heard anything specific and, uh, city solicitors and town council association has weekly calls. So I think we had a call, I can't remember if it was Thursday or Friday, and those kinds of questions came up. And I don't think there was a concrete answer yet. Um, and, and for the record, I think it's important to note that when we do get something from D L S, I expect them to be very helpful. I, I think that they are a little concerned that when we're getting into one-twelfth budgets that don't go through the, the legislative process in a municipality, then we're going to be then doing it a two-step. And it is a significant amount of work in an office that's going to be, um, uh, really, really hit hard by a lot of requests come the new fiscal year. So I get their reticence to it, but no one at D O R has been anything but, but helpful. In fact, as you know, on a subject matter we'll be talking about, uh, perhaps a little later in the meeting, they were incredibly receptive with respect to a unique fiscal issue that, that we have that, uh, has nothing to do with COVID nineteen. So the staff there continues to be really helpful. I think if they had a preference, if they could choose whether towns are going to adopt an omnibus budget now or go to one-twelfth, they probably choose do your budget in the normal course, but we understand and will be helpful when you, um, if and when you have to do a one-twelve. But hopefully over the next couple of weeks, we'll see some guidelines. I'm sure they're working really hard on it.
So Mr. Chairman, just more of a comment rather than a question at this point. Uh, any reason for us to, um, move the current June fifteenth timeline for the town meeting, um, into fiscal year twenty-one? From my seat, will be dictated mostly, if not entirely, by the fiscal uncertainties. We need to have some basis for building the twenty-one budget. If those factors are not in play, it's not sensible or prudent, I think, to build any kind of a reliable budget into the next fiscal year. Social distancing rules notwithstanding, uh, and the creative ways we could probably pull off the meeting if we have those financial pieces. I think we could pull it off, um, but with six weeks to go before that date and a lot of decisions, um, that, um, have to be made in the process of preparing the, uh, the budget for that timeframe. I think our board needs to have a closer look at, um, some of the planning that needs to go to into it. And, um, I'm prepared to make a motion, um, this evening for our board to consider as one of those next steps. Um, I'd like to make a motion to direct the town accountant to, um, prepare one-twelfth budgets, um, uh, that basically mimic the, the FY twenty-one budget, excuse me, the FY twenty budget sliced into twelve pieces as a, as a model, uh, for us to consider, uh, working on towards a FY twenty-one solution. Um, the budgets should be delivered to us and we can, we can review them, assess whether or not they befit our needs. And then should we, um, then need to, we, we, we need to then pass it on to the finance committee for their advice and consultation pursuant to our charter.
That would be after we discuss it.
Yeah, um, their, their input would be very valuable. Um, and I think at that point, um, we're now weeks into this process. In the event we decide to postpone, um, the June fifteenth date into July, we've done our homework. We've done our planning and we have a good idea of, hopefully by then of the guidelines D L S will require for us to submit our, our one-twelfth request for certification. But I think, um, most of the work is being done as we speak. This evening, we're going to hear from the three largest town budgets on the impact of zero percent, which is basically an FY twenty-one, one-twelfth budget. So we get the idea of what the, what the impacts are going to be. But at this point, I'd like the, the motion to stand that the town accountant would prepare line items in a report for us to examine so that we can begin asking more service related questions and understand what's at stake once we undertake this exercise.
Very good, yes, very organized approach. Do we have a second, Mrs. Hine?
Yeah, I second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Apollo's motion carries, thank you. Any questions now for, uh, Jay Talaman concerning the, uh, possibility of a one-twelfth budget from the audience? Okay, we will move on to the annual town meeting and election dates. Um, Mrs. Hine, any thoughts?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I, I don't feel any urgency right now to change dates in terms of, uh, the town meeting or the election. Um, you know, again, that call that I was on with Metro West Regional Collaborative, I think that many towns in our area are, um, waiting and watching before they make decisions on when they're going to hold town meeting and I'm perfectly comfortable doing that.
Waiting a couple more weeks?
Yeah, I, I agree with John that having more information in terms of the financial picture is critical. And Jay, I, I had a question for you, that Senate bill that was passed today, uh, I think it's, uh, twenty-six seventy-three. There didn't seem to be, there seemed to be information about virtual town meeting for governments that work with, uh, representative town meeting, but it did not seem to apply to a community like Holliston. So I'm taking, right now, based on what I read, I'm taking the idea of a virtual town meeting off the table for consideration, unless you feel there's, uh, information out there that could guide Holliston. I, I don't really see that as a relevant thing to consider right now. Again, the idea that we could hold a virtual town meeting of any sort, kind of separate from the financial piece. But in terms of the physical distancing and the questions around that, um, again, don't really see a virtual town meeting as something that Holliston could explore at this time. Does that, do you confirm that, do you agree with that?
I, I, I do agree with that and that's echoed through the, um, the group conversations that moderate, the ma, mass moderate, my, S moderators association is having and I'm active in that, in that association. I, I just don't see it coming down. It's also, if you look at the multiple logistical requirements, even for the representative town meeting in the, in the bill that went through the House and Senate, um, to apply some of that to an open town meeting would be incredibly difficult to assure that if you, what if you had a hot button issue on your town meeting or there's something hot about the budget? Even if it's reduced to its essence, you could still have five hundred people. You have to provide a, a level of technology that would be adequate to satisfy everyone. And then if you apply that to the numerous small, more rural and blue collar towns that, um, only have open town meeting to get them up to speed, uh, from a technological perspective, to make that workable for them so that there'd be parity across the commonwealth would be incredibly difficult. Um, in, including there's some towns that don't even have broadband yet in the western part of the state. So that's, those are some of the reasons why it's just not likely to happen at all for the, um, open town meetings.
Okay, thank you very much.
John, any questions?
Not at this time, I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the audience concerning, um, our annual town meeting or election dates? For, uh, questions for our town council? Okay. Next on the agenda is the FY twenty-one budget reviews for the fire and police and D P W. But before that, uh, if Representative Dykema has any further comments that she wants to say about those sort of budgets before we review them?
I don't, just appreciate the, the opportunity to be here and it's good to see everyone, um, virtually. And I think I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna check out here while you finish your business for the evening. It was great to see you.
Okay. Thank you, Carolyn.
Hi, thank you.
And good night.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Okay, so we have the, uh, should we do the fire budget first, Chief? Are you there? Chief Cassidy?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
And would you like to go over your, your, uh, budget?
Uh, certainly, I spent over, I hope you've had an opportunity to review. Uh, I was able to submit a zero-zero budget for the, the fire department, uh, which is premised on no cola increases for our employees and a, uh, a, a zero percent increase bottom line over the FY twenty appropriation. This would not have an impact on our service delivery. We would continue to take sick people to the hospital, put fires out and deal with hazardous material incidents in town and a, a variety of other, uh, emergencies that people call us for.
Okay, Mrs. Hine, any questions?
Yeah, just a, a, a simple question. I emailed you about this, Chief Cassidy, in terms of the town meeting articles and the appropriations and the balances left. Um, you've updated those since your presentation, um, I think back in February. Uh, so I, I see balances, um, will they be returned to the general fund?
No, a lot of these are, are things that have already been ordered, but just haven't been received. Part of the challenge is a, a lot of our, our vendors aren't able to, uh, come out and make deliveries or installation. For example, uh, the gear, uh, extractor that's been ordered to keep our firefighters, uh, from the impact of carcinogens on our protective gear. That's been ordered, but they haven't been able to make the delivery because they're not considered to be an essential business.
Okay. Okay, that's it, thank you.
John, any questions for the chief?
Just a couple, Chief, your, uh, your, your efforts to achieve, um, a zero-based budget included what appears to be a large percentage, small dollars, but a large percentage drop in dispatcher overtime. Um, it looks like you were looking for an initial bump for FY twenty-one and you've removed that. Can you describe a little bit about what that overtime request was for and what impact that reduction now has, Mike, for overtime on dispatchers?
Um, are, are you looking at the, the fire budget?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so my, my budget request even for a zero percent, uh, does include an increase for, uh, dispatcher overtime because although we've had several years where we were able to keep dispatcher overtime down to almost zero, uh, in recent years, we've found that we've had to increase, uh, the use of, uh, overtime to cover dispatch shifts. I've had to work several shifts in the last couple of years, uh, and it's just not feasible for me to do that all the time right now, uh, especially with some of my current, uh, obligations during the day. Um, so that, that's the reason for the increase to the, the dispatcher overtime.
I understand your confusion, Mike, I misspoke. I meant, I think I mentioned it was a cut, it was an increase of two thousand dollars and you're carrying that within your zero percent budget, correct?
Yes, I, 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 uh, I just can't keep working midnight shifts during the year.
Now, the, the rest of it is basically thirteen thousand seven hundred sixty-six in reduced salaries. Um, you said those are cost of living allowances?
Uh, so those reductions were based on, uh, calculated appropriations for those individual positions. There was, uh, a little bit of flexibility in prior year appropriations. And so we, we scaled it back to exactly what they're making right now this year in fiscal year twenty, based on the number of job incumbents and twelve months. And that's how, uh, a lot of those reductions were made to things like the lieutenant's salary, the captain's salary, the deputy's salary and, uh, the regular salaries for the, the firefighters.
Mike, last question, um, in a few minutes, you're going to hear from Chief Stone about his police budget. He's been able to achieve, um, a similar baseline budget for FY twenty-one. Um, and he'll do that through, um, a request to spend a favorability in FY twenty for one-time costs. Do you see any items in FY twenty that you would similarly like to request permission to spend to offset the cuts that might be coming in fiscal year twenty-one?
Uh, not so much favorability in FY twenty, but to Mrs. Hine's question earlier with regards to outstanding, uh, town meeting appropriations that have not been fully, uh, spent down yet. That, that's where I would seek to, to make sure that we're buoyed not only for FY twenty-one, but really positioned, uh, for the next couple of years to, to make sure that we, we have the equipment and supplies that we need.
That's all the questions I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mike, can you explain for the residents, um, by coming into a zero percent budget, um, what exactly that means for your department? Um, you said it's not going to affect services. What exactly is it going to affect that residents should?
It, it's going to impact the individual members of our department. The, the majority of our municipal budget, as with most municipal, uh, departments, is, is personnel. So that means that the, the on-call firefighters, the on-call E M Ts, the dispatchers, uh, will not see a, a cola increase. Um, and while things like health insurance expenses will continue to go up, their rent will go up, their mortgage, mortgage will continue to go up. Uh, their, uh, their rate for FY twenty-one under this, um, schema would, would remain static at what it is in fiscal year twenty, which means that what, what they were making on July first, two thousand twenty, or two thousand nineteen would be the same thing that they're making June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-one.
And that really is significant and we shouldn't think of that lightly. Um, as you say, these are volunteers and they only get paid, um, for the time that they work. And, uh, we really depend upon them to save lives. So there's also a motivational factor there. Um, and, um, so I don't think we should be taking this, uh, cut lightly, but I do understand why you made the cuts where you did. Um, but I am concerned about it.
Certainly, and, and again, you know, I, I, I didn't come up with, with that type of cut. That was the guidance that came from the board and from the FinCom was that we would do a zero percent increase, uh, both to, uh, personnel as well as to the bottom line. So it, it's not that I arbitrarily chose to, to cut people's, uh, hourly rates. It's that I was following the direction given to me. Right.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from residents?
Mark, could I ask a quick question?
Yes.
A follow-up question, Chief Cassidy. Um, you mentioned before the impact of no cola, uh, on your employees who are going to see increases in health insurance premiums. We know increases in health insurance premiums are a, a fact of life. What kind, can you share, uh, any numbers or stories about the impact of how salaries change over time as healthcare costs rise, uh, in, in an environment where they're not getting a cola? I've, I've had, uh, input from, uh, employees at the D P W, at the highway department on what their sort of, their take-home pay looks like, uh, as health insurance premiums rise and colas either don't arrive or they don't keep up with some of those fixed cost, um, uh, increases. Can you speak a little bit more about that?
Sure, hap, happy to talk about that. So for a married firefighter who has a family plan, uh, of health insurance through the town, uh, even if they attend every training meeting during a given month, uh, and they participate in the, the, the calls that we have for service where their, uh, engine or their ladder or whatever functional unit they're assigned to, uh, got paged out. or their ladder or whatever functional unit they're assigned to, uh, got paged out, it is still possible even between the monthly stipend, the hourly retainer for the calls that they attended, and their meeting attendance stipend, uh, for the treasurer to send them, uh, an invoice at the end of a month, uh, because they didn't make a month, enough in monthly take-home from the town to cover the employee share of their health insurance policy.
Monthly stipend, meeting stipend, and what was the third?
Uh, mu- mu- monthly stipend, which is to carry the pager, hourly retainer for the calls that they attend, and then the stipend for meeting that they attend.
Okay. All right, thanks for sharing that.
Any other questions for the fire chief? Oh, okay. I'll take a motion, uh, if you're prepared, John.
Um, I'll, um, extend a motion to accept the prepared FY twenty-one, um, budget, revised budget, zero percent growth prepared by Chief Cassidy.
Do we have a second?
Second?
All of them, favor?
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Thank you, chief, very much.
So, the, uh, next budget would be ambulance, uh, very similar to the fire department budget. What I, what I did was I just, uh, brought the, the, the personnel costs back to a zero percent, no COLA, no increase, uh, and was able to, once again, bring the proposed budget back to, uh, what, what the level is for fiscal year twenty. And again, we're gonna continue to deliver the, the level of service that we deliver now. If people call, we're gonna come, we're gonna take care of their issue, and, uh, we're gonna go back to our, our homes or businesses or wherever we responded to the emergency from.
Questions, Tina?
No, no questions, thank you, chief.
John?
Chief, have you had any conversations about that kind of a, um, um, financial impact with the individuals that provide our service?
Uh, anecdotally, I've, I've had a few one-on-one conversations. We've curtailed our department, uh, meetings and our, our trainings due to the restrictions on individuals gathering, so we have not met as a large group, uh, during April nor are we planning to in May. Um, I have had individual conversations, I have warned them that, uh, the, there will be austerity measures that are required and that, um, we're, we're gonna need to, to really, um, tighten our belt and make sure that, uh, any money that's spent, uh, can be justified.
Very good, I'm all set, thank you.
Any other questions from the audience for Chief Stone regarding the ambulance budget? Seeing none, I'll take a motion, John.
Uh, motion to approve the zero percent, uh, ambulance budget for FY twenty-one as presented by Chief Cassidy.
Do we have a second?
Second?
All of them, favor?
Aye.
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 Both, motion carries. Thank you, chief, again.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, and my very last budget for your consideration this evening is a much quicker one, and that is our emergency management budget, and the majority of that budget is used to support our community notification system, which was last used on Friday afternoon at three PM, uh, with which we notified people, uh, through a multiple modalities. We texted them, we called their cell phone or we called their home phone, and we emailed them, and we let them know about the, uh, the Board of Health Order Regarding Face Coverings. And so the majority of our budget, uh, appropriation goes to support our Blackboard Connect System, which I would use this opportunity to once again encourage residents that they need to self-select and they need to make sure that their information is up to date so that they can get information, like when we decide to reopen the recycling center, that would be sent out over the Blackboard System. But, uh, once again, a zero percent budget over the FY twenty appropriation.
Any questions, Tina?
No, none, thank you.
John? Just a, a point of reference, Mike, I'm sure you'll hear about it, the Finance Committee's been talking about building a reserve for FY twenty-one associated with COVID-nineteen emergency response, um, to the extent that any of the resources that might be used in FY twenty-one, uh, for COVID response may fit under this line item. Has there been any conversations with the Finance Committee? Do you see it exclusively as a reserve account? Or do you see this as an opportunity to move some funds into the emergency management line item to, to befit the services that you oversee?
Uh, my preference would be that, uh, any expenses that we can, uh, would be charged to the Response and Recovery revolving account, uh, with the, um, understanding that any federal reimbursement, uh, that is received, uh, related to those expenses that came out of the revolving account, instead of going into the general account, would go back to replenish the revolving account, uh, three, five, six, five, seven.
Um, and have you had any conversations with the Finance Committee about that?
Uh, I have not, uh, because the decision not to, uh, put federal reimbursements received under the Stafford Act in recent years, uh, has been a staff decision for, uh, an individual that reports to your board and not to the Finance Committee.
I'm all set, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, emergency management budget for FY, uh, twenty-one at zero percent as presented by Chief Cassidy.
Um, before we do that, do we have any questions from the audience for the? Okay, we have a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second?
All of them, favor?
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Thank you again, Mr. Chief Cassidy.
Thank you.
And now we'll move on to the police budget. Uh, Police Chief Stone, are you with us?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chairman.
Can you go over your budget and explain it to the residents, please?
I can, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. Last week I sent over a handful of scenarios to the town administrator and, uh, I would preface my comments that our complexity of our calls continue to increase. Just this past week, uh, we've handled a number of medical calls, domestic disturbances, a stolen motor vehicle, mental health calls, and an overdose call. Uh, we identify with the fiscal uncertainties that lie ahead, so we've worked, uh, continuously to try to review our budget and identify areas where we can cost-save, um, where possible. Uh, we looked into FY twenty-one and it looked at our fiscal, uh, excuse me, our known and fis- fixed costs ahead of us. Uh, we've reached out to many of our vendors as we do when we build a scenario budget in the spring and winter times, and we've tried to reach out to the vendors to see what flexibility they have in FY twenty-one for us. Uh, I've spoken with our public safety liaisons, Mr. Cron and Mr. Zeta, about using our FY twenty favorability funds to offset costs in FY twenty-one. I did meet with, uh, both liaisons virtually, uh, last week and are ready to present scenarios as requested and needed. Again, I presented two of them, one re- reducing in the areas of supplies, uh, services and professional development, and a second scenario based on personnel, uh, reductions.
Okay. Is there anything that would harm the, the services that residents expect with this zero percent budget?
Sure, so I, I would, uh, just say that our goal is obviously to ensure the public safety services that the town both deserves and expects, and we would do that to any extent possible. We constantly review our budget, uh, by way of a SWOT analysis, so we continually look at strength, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats throughout the year, and I present a quarterly report to the town administrator, planning for scenarios such as this. Uh, certainly a zero percent budget overall would be a strain on our personnel and staff as Chief Cassidy mentioned. Uh, while the cost of living increases for rent, health insurance, everyday expenses go up, having a zero percent COLA increase for our staff would certainly, uh, make it difficult for our employees. Uh, we do run a twenty-four hour a day operation, seven days a week, and most of our officers, if not all, uh, are challenged with daycare, have two parents working at a time and working twenty-four hours around the clock, nights and weekends. So that would certainly present a challenge for them, uh, but we would do our best to continue the services that we provide at this time.
Thank you, chief. Um, Mrs. Hine, do you have a question or two?
Yeah, so, um, Chief Stone, thank you for preparing this budget. I'm just looking at the, so you presented two, one is a point seven-five percent increase and then one is a zero?
Correct.
Okay. I'm looking at the one that's a zero percent, uh, uh, actually it's a negative point oh six, not zero, so you come under target there. Um, in terms of professional development, uh, you, you just referenced professional, I believe you just referenced professional development as an area that you would see remain the same, so our officers would still get the training that they, um, if we can fiscal year twenty, there'd be no change to their training?
Right now, we haven't, we haven't taken any funds for professional development. Uh, we do have a newer office on the department and with the, uh, required training, uh, hours and so forth from the state, if, they, officers do have to maintain a certain level of, um, classes and remote training opportunities, so cutting that off the, uh, top would be, I'd be reluctant to do that right off the bat, but certainly an area where we could explore further, uh, whether it be hosting classes online or, uh, reducing the number of classes we have at the police station, that's an area we could review further. Uh, but most of the reductions were in supplies and services.
I misunderstood you, I, I thought you'd said something different earlier. I'm glad to see that you have not made any, uh, reductions there on professional development, and same for community outreach. Um, I'm glad to see those remain intact from fiscal year twenty. Um, yeah, I don't have any, uh, additional questions. Again, I know you worked with, um, both of your liaisons from the Select Board and the Finance Committee, so I'm confident in what you prepared and appreciate that you've done it, thank you.
Thank you.
John, any questions?
So, chief, um, again, to reiterate, you prepared two models, um, one is, uh, obviously deeper than the other. You have a collective bargaining agreement in play. Is the lower zero percent budget, um, basically impacted? Uh, uh, are you not able to reach your collective bargaining obligations with a zero percent?
Uh, because we're in contract negotiations right now, it would fall back to where we currently are, so the, uh, collective bargaining agreement now is due to expire on June thirtieth. We'd basically maintain that same status, uh, throughout FY twenty-one until a new agreement is set. So I just use FY twenty rates for FY twenty-one budget.
And that's the zero percent budget, chief?
That was the one percent guideline based on the original Finance Committee guideline of FY twenty-one.
So, uh, remind me again, what takes you down to zero percent?
So the reduction in fifty, the fifty-two to fifty-three lines, I'm sorry, that would be, I'm, I, I misunderstood you, I'm sorry. That would be using the FY twenty current budget, so the FY twenty current budget has no increases whatsoever.
And that includes no COLAs, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then the one point seven-five guideline was, um, with COLAs but giving up over fifty thousand dollars worth of one-time expenses, is that correct?
Yes, the point seven-five increase would be the one percent, yeah, the, uh, one percent guideline as determined by the board and the Finance Committee with the, almost, we, I think we reevaluated after our discussion this past week, uh, close to sixty thousand, sixty-five thousand dollars in reduction in services and supplies.
So, Mr. Chairman, with regret, I, I, I think we have to look at the chief's presentation of the zero percent guideline. It, it, um, it, just like the fire department's budget, it's going after first responder salaries, it's, um, it's getting down to the point where individuals that, you know, we rely on to respond to critical emergencies and so forth are gonna be, um, uh, sacrificing the most under this model, uh, so it's with regret, I think we have to embrace it, it's the number. Uh, that's pretty much what we're getting down to at this point is salaries and, and individual earnings, and there's not much left to give. He's got a modest amount to, um, offer for FY twenty pre-purchasing, um, working with Mr. Ritter, Ms., Ms. Emmerich this week, um, Ms. Emmerich has drafted a memo that will go out to the town departments as guidance for a potential FY twenty spending. Mr. Chairman, earlier I spoke to Chief Cassidy about any ideas he might have to maximize his favorability this year to decrease the budget for next year. Uh, Chief Stone's achieved that with, um, uh, what was the total number, um, Matt, by the time you were done with all those FY twenty costs, was it about fifty-five thousand?
I think it was clo- we, after reevaluation, it was close to sixty-five.
Sixty-five, um, which is, which is great, th- there's a balance act there, and I'm sure our friends on the Finance Committee who are listening are thinking, well, that's basically stealing a little bit of free cash. Um, there's a little bit of a balance there, the accountant is going to send out a guidance memo that instructs town depart- town departments not to use the favorability to steal free cash, it's to maximize your spending authority. And by all means, as, uh, departments are trying to do that and, and purchase things here at the end of the year, they should be getting new quotes and trying to find favorability from the markets. So, we're gonna try to do that on a small scale. Chief Stone did a great job in his budget, getting those numbers down, and I think through that method and the, and the freeze on salaries for next year, um, I can support his budget, but he is down to the bone right now.
Yeah, I, I have to say, I'm not happy at all, uh, with the first responders, um, not getting a COLA increase, it really, it really bothers me and I'm sure it bothers a lot of residents, uh, and I'm sure that, um, we'll be hearing from a lot of residents, uh, concerning this matter, um, because we all depend on the first responders and, uh, they're always there for us, so it's a shame, uh, but we're, as a town, we're all in this together and, and, uh, so I, I, uh, reluctantly will take a motion, uh, to accept the.
Police Chiefs.
I, I will offer a motion to accept the, uh, Police Chief's, um, proposed FY twenty-one budget at zero percent growth.
Do we have a second?
Second?
All of them, favor?
Aye.
Both, motion carries. And I just wanna, uh, commend you, chief, um, uh, you have been an outstanding, uh, chief of police, um, and you really organize the department and have created a team effect, uh, which has been noticed throughout town. And not only that, but you communicate very well with all the other department heads and collaborate with them, and which makes our job a lot easier here at the Select Board, so thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, you took the words out of my mouth, it's a team effort and, uh, I give all the credit to the boots on the ground.
Thank you. And do we have any questions for the police chief from the audience? All right, seeing none, we will go to the DPW budget. Mr. Reese, are you with us?
I am.
And can you please present your budget and explain it?
Sure, so I'm gonna present three budgets, the highway water, and then we have the facilities manager, uh, we'll focus right now on the highway and water. Uh, the DPW also is a twenty-four hour operation, yeah, so there's no, no COLA adjustments. Um, they, if you, so on the highway, first, if you exclude the up branch, which was increased, um, on my, based on my conversations, uh, and under the advice of my, uh, FinCom liaison, based on our run rates for this year, twenty-twenty of one tree a week, average cost of two thousand dollars for a move, so we, we didn't increase the up branch. But other than that, the highway budget is zero percent, there's no increase in every, anything. Um, we had to make cuts, we had to completely remove temporary labor, uh, reduction of police details, a reduction in assigned purchases, um, to make the budget work, and obviously no cost in, uh, you know, increase in COLA.
Can you explain the temporary labor?
That's used, uh, basically as our summer help, so for both the water and the highway. So water specifically is we would use it for hydrant painting, um, a- any other products we had, um, highway is, is any kind of special projects and a majority of grass cutting. So that's we, we completely, um, eliminated any summer help.
So would you propose every other week, grass cutting type of thing?
Depends, I mean, they're out there, well, I mean, they're cutting once a week, I mean, they're cutting every day, but it can be a weekly cut when, you know, during peak growth season, but they're just, you know, we'll have to do without the temporary labor, the summer help for that.
Okay.
And we've also had to cut police details for both the water and the highway.
Okay. Does that include the, um, tree warden too, cutting police tr- details?
It would, 'cause we utilize, um, the police details, you know, if we, you know, obviously if we need to detail for to cut a tree, to have a contract to cut a tree, we absorb the cost of a detail.
Right. Um, in any way, does this cut reflect, uh, safety, uh?
There's no reduction, uh, well, there's no reduction in our services provided to the public either on the highway or the water, but, I mean, I mean, certainly there's no additional expenditures.
Okay. Mrs. Hine, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions, thank you.
John? John?
Um, no, I, I, again, I think we're, we're, we're seeing the uh, the diminished level of service starting to creep in here. Uh, the residents of Holliston are, are not likely to enjoy what they're hearing. Um, but in order to keep things kind of in a static position, I guess, I guess that's what this, this budget brings us to. Um, when you were working up this budget, Sean, you mentioned that you'd work with the finance committee, is that right?
Yes.
Um, who, who did you work with on the finance committee? Did you work with your liaison?
Yeah, I mean liaison, Ben Sprowl.
Okay, I know Ben.
So we um, right, so we, we had recommendations, you know, based on previous discussion. What we did was where we could three-year average align on, and we did uh where it made sense. Um, and we also used the current run rates for the year to calculate out the remainder of the year and we applied it to the next fiscal year and some level, some items were level funded. Um, where we, because we tried to reduce and find savings anywhere we could. But I did not forward the um, the budget to Vincent yet. Um, I figure, you know, as we move forward, uh, the fin, the finance committee will have some additional comments.
Uh, I don't have any additional comments at this time.
I, I hear uh working with Ben Sprowl, I hear is pretty tough. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, they're all good. They're all, they're all good to work with.
You, you gotta watch out for those quiet ones, you know?
Yeah.
Um, thank you, um, thank you, Sean, and uh, and, and again, um, your department, I've said many times, uh, uh, whether it be the water department, the highway department, um, they touch every other department head and committee in this town. Um, providing services to the school department that a lot of people aren't aware of. It's uh the town uh DPW budget that pays for mowing of the lawns at the schools and plowing them. Uh, it does not come out of the school department budget. And um this collaboration allows there to be more funds for the students uh with their programming. So, there's a lot of good thing that, things that go on with your department, such as en, emptying trash barrels at the parks, for the parks department. Um, and the list goes on and on and on. Um, your, your department uh is the one that is out late at night fixing water leaks uh that we may drive by. And we may not drive by because they may not be in our neighborhood. But the leaks go on uh due to uh a, a lack of, of uh maintenance and upkeep and uh replacement of very old pipes that should have been replaced forty years ago. And it's crossed us town a lot of money, uh, often late at night, uh, paying people to repair these, these uh situations. And uh so we want to thank you, your department, for always being there for us twenty-four seven.
Thank you. It's uh, again, the credit goes to the staff, uh, both the union staff and the administration, the highway and the water. So to echo your comments, it's important that the town try and maintain focus as, as best they can during these times to continue uh to make efforts to, you know, fund the uh water main replacement projects. If we can get any more, I know we probably can't, it's something we should still examine. Uh, we've had thr, two water main breaks uh as of Friday. Uh, so we've been out there twice um since Friday. It's, what is it, three days? And we had uh one service leak. So we continue to, you know, repair those, again, kind of out of the public view, but there are always, there's a continual breakage in town um quite often. So it's just important that, you know, again, we do have a funding mechanism in place, but I, I also want to kind of maintain focus on those other, other water infrastructure improvement plans that we have. If that makes any sense.
Really badly needed. Um, you know, the, the average leak to fix is in the thousands of dollars uh just for the residents to know. Um, and again, it's because the can was kicked down the road decade after decade and it affects people's water pressure. Uh, and it affects uh the town's budget, um, having to repair and fix. And it's really not a good situation.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't want to belabor the point, but I mean, people know the value of water uh where they don't have any. Um, it's, it's so, so it's important to remember that.
Yeah, and it's important to remember that our neighbors' quality of water and their issues with it are, uh, may not be known by us, but it's certainly known to them when they don't turn that faucet on and, and can't get a shower in the morning or whatever they need to do. So, you know, when we make these decisions at town meeting, we need to be thoughtful of our neighbors. But, but thank you for your presentation. Do we have any questions for uh DPW?
Facilities manager budget, if you wanted to touch, I don't know if you received a copy of that, but I, I can discuss it.
Yes, yes. Yeah, do you want to go over that before we do questions?
That would be great.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, the facilities manager budget, um, again, it is, it does show an increase. Uh, a, a significant increase, but that is just because of, when the facilities manager came in, it was, you know, halfway through the fiscal year. But again, is, there's a zero percent increase in personal services, okay, which is the salary item. Um, we did need to appropriate some funds for communications, which was six hundred dollars and um some supplies and materials, which is five hundred dollars. And a personal development line item, we put a thousand dollars in it for him to uh get some um, you know, personal development that he needs to, to kind of move forward with the position. So, um, the request of the fiscal year is one hundred twenty-one thousand thirty-seven dollars.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Mrs. Hine, any questions?
Um, Sean, I'm, I'm putting you on the spot a little bit, so please uh feel free to defer uh these questions if you're not ready to answer them. But coming back, coming back to the water main breaks, the Tuesday, Friday, do you have an estimate on what each one would cost for repairs or?
I haven't, um, I don't have the exact cost yet, but so Friday, it happened Friday evening. So you would have overtime cost. Um, we had to uh contract the machine out um and cost of the actual material to replace the pipe that happened to be located right over Culvert on Winter Street, uh, which is a, another, you know, we have that in line uh for a complete pipe replacement, but you know, sometimes you can't get there. We can't expedite it quick enough. But that, that probably costs somewhere, say, four to five thousand. But we've had water main breaks where it's cost upwards of thirty thousand based on labor. And sometimes you have to put a, uh, cut another insertion valve in this. So every, you know, every break is a little bit different depending on, you know, when it is, where it is, and how we can shut it down, the type of material, what it's going to take to actually do the replacement.
And you mentioned that these costs are in your budget. What line item is it that covers repairs of um water main breaks? I'm just looking at your budget now and again. I'm putting you on the spot, we can uh.
No, it's okay. I could, just give me a second to, to, to get the line items for you. So it could be a combination of a few different line items. You know, obviously it's personal services for, for um the labor, the labor portion.
Okay.
Um, one would be five eight oh nine, which would be field expenses. So we would have a lot of them, service stock come out of that line item. And we could also use um repair and maintenance supplies if we needed to hire in um a, a, a contractor to do that. Uh, in other words, if we needed like a particular part. And um we could also use professional uh services or technical services line items, fifty-three hundred.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Those are, if you look at the water, those are the heavy line items. Those have the most funding in them to just, obviously, to kind of fund that type of uh issue.
Thank you. Okay.
And so what was the cost of fixing uh water pipe breaks uh the most current year?
I, I mean, I don't, I haven't, to be honest with you, Mark, I really haven't calculated it out, but we, we have some, we have overtime expense for uh six individuals, a contractor. Uh, I could, if you gave me a couple hours or, or, you know, another day, I could actually have the exact cost. But it would be at least for, for the winter street, probably uh somewhere around five thousand.
So if you could, if you could get us uh what it cost last year for our next board meeting, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Thank you. Any questions, John?
No, sir.
Any questions from the audience to our DPW director? Okay, I will take a motion.
Uh, motion to approve the zero percent budget as presented by Mr. Reese this evening for FY twenty one for water, highway, and facilities.
And that also includes up, up branching.
Correct.
Do we have a second?
Seconds.
All of them favor it?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We're gonna take a short five-minute break and then we will be back. Uh, we still have a lot more board business to do. So uh we will see you in five minutes. Um, next up is our facilities manager, uh James Keast. You have some information for?
Yes, sir. Hi. Um, thank you for having me tonight. Um, a couple things to talk about. One is uh two sixty Woodlands, two sixty Woodland Street. On uh April twenty-second, we had a sealed bid opening uh for the uh, the cleanup of that particular site at two sixty Woodland. Uh, it's uh, you know, the benefit of, of uh, of having multiple bidders, we originally went into this thinking that the cost to clean up that particular site was going to be in excess of a hundred thousand dollars. Um, maybe it's a sign of the times, but we had nine folks uh, uh bid uh for this project. And the bids ranged from forty thousand all the way up to a hundred and two thousand. And a hundred and two is, is, was pretty much the outlier. Most of the bids were in the forty uh to seventy thousand dollar range. Uh, the one uh bidder that came in the lowest at forty thousand two hundred and forty-eight dollars was Compass Restoration Services. Uh, the consultant we're using uh from Universal uh Environmental Consultants has worked with this company before and says they're quite good. And so we've decided to select them. Um, and uh, you know, by doing that at forty thousand and then uh adding a ten thousand dollar buffer for potential concerns, we put in the warrant uh for the town meeting uh fifty thousand dollars, which is about half of what we were originally looking for.
Terrific. And um I want to thank you for all the, the uh work you've been doing. Um, several people in town are quite impressed with um the way you've been handling this new facilities manager position and really already saved our town a lot of money. So, I can't thank you enough. This position was long overdue.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Do you want to talk a little bit about Pinecrest Doors and?
Sure, sure. I don't know if there are any questions on the Woodland Street?
Yeah, I, I have one.
Go ahead, Gina.
Thanks, Mark. Um, James, just had a quick question. I know that DEP has, I, I think you suggested that DEP has been flexible uh waiting for town meeting vote, knowing that that's how the appropriation is going to come?
Yes, they've been flexible. I did ask them if we could um uh delay this even further to a fall town meeting. Uh, they uh were not very keen on the idea. I think if there were dire circumstances, they would uh allow it, but their preference is to have that uh uh cleaned up uh based off of approval from a spring town meeting.
But a delay into, into late June, early July, if that were the?
Yes, yes. They, they understand that there could be a delay um and uh, and, and so that we're trying hard. Every week, I'm in communication with them, providing pictures of the site. Um, and they're, they're happy with everything so far and they know there's things that are out of our, our control.
So you're confident there'll be no compliance issues if we delay the cleanup because we're delaying town meeting?
No, yes, I am confident there'll be no issues, yes.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Questions, John?
No, just a remark, and I'll share your enthusiasm for the new hires, um productivity to date. But in, embedded in this is the beauty of sealed bids. You know, bidding something always generates great competition. It's a fundamental part of public procurement and I think we saw that play out here. Uh, so thank you, Mr. Keast, for uh putting that up to bid. I'm all set.
I don't think we need any motions or anything here, Mr. Keast. Um, and your, and the budget's already been approved for you, so we just did that officially and.
Well, this particular, yeah, but this particular one, he needs to um bring to the finance. Well, this particular, yeah, but this particular one, he needs to, um, bring to the finance committee to, uh, seek funding.
Oh, right, right. We do need a motion.
I would recommend he go with a vote, um, that, um, affirms our, our stated interest in having it as an FY twenty expense. I think it's something we should try to explore with a reserve fund transfer.
Absolutely. And do you wanna make a motion for?
Yeah, Mr. Keast, could you give us the low bid number again so I can make that remark in my, my motion?
Sure, absolutely. It's, uh, forty thousand two hundred and forty-eight dollars. The company is Compass Restoration Services.
Uh, I'll make a bid to support the, excuse me, I'll make a motion to, um, award a contract to Co- Co- Compass Restoration Services in the total amount of forty thousand two forty-eight, subject to, uh, funding through reserve, uh, fund transfer by the finance committee in FY twenty.
And he had requested a buffer.
Not, did you, Mr. Keast, did you not have a conversation with Jeff about the remaining funds from the FY, uh, from the fall town meeting warrant article? Isn't there funding left over from that twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars that could be the buffer?
There, there is funding, uh, but unfortunately, uh, the dumpsters that are on site, uh, were being charged for those. So it's, you know, to Tina's question about delaying, um, you know, the, uh, funding for this potentially, uh, to fall, we're still gonna incur costs, uh, by having those dumpsters sit idle on the site. Uh, I, I can get an exact number of what's left, but we're, we are burning through that, um, you know, every day.
And so you'd like the permission to spend up to fifty, but the compass, uh, quote is forty, is that correct?
That is correct. Let you, you know, we don't know what, uh, might pop up. It'd be nice to have that buffer. Obviously, if you don't spend it all, you know, we won't, we won't.
Well, um, I'll, I'll amend my motion to include the up to, up to fifty thousand dollars for the cost associated with the remediation at Woodland Street, uh, specifically to cover the cost for Compass Restoration Services.
Do we have a second?
I will second it and add the comment, then, uh, if we could instruct Jeff Ritter to remove the currently hundred thousand dollar item on the capital request for Article seventeen. Uh, so he hasn't, so if we could, I second this motion, uh, with the direction to, uh, Jeff Ritter to remove. Looking for it here.
We, we would, we would not wanna do that yet, um, because we don't have the reserve fund transfer voted on yet from the finance committee, so we may need it in the warrant. So, so can we hold off on that, Tina, for a week or two?
Okay, so I'm seconding then just a request for a reserve fund transfer from the finance committee.
Yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both? Motion carries. Thank you, uh, Mr. Keast.
Okay.
Much appreciated.
Uh, next thing.
Doors down.
And the doors?
Yep. Um, we, uh, I also, uh, put out a bid, uh, this was not a sealed bid, but it was, uh, a formal, uh, request for quotes, um, for repairing the, uh, actually one, two, so four sets of double doors and two single doors at the Pinecrest Golf Club. Uh, as well as repairing, uh, some trim on the cupola that sits in the center of the roof, uh, of, uh, of the building. I've, uh, received nine, um, quotes back, ranging from, uh, twenty-one thousand all the way up to forty-one thousand dollars. Uh, the lowest bidder is Cornerstone Building Services. Total cost for the project is twenty-one thousand six hundred and thirty dollars. That includes, uh, you know, eighteen thousand three hundred and fifty-eight for door repairs and three thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars for the cupola repairs. Um, each of these, uh, quarters, uh, submitted references, so I followed up with references for the bottom three. Uh, actually, all three of them, uh, uh, had very good, uh, reviews from the folks that worked with them in the past. I also did an online search, um, looking at, you know, Google reviews and, and whatnot for these folks. Uh, some didn't have any, some did, and they were also good. And I also checked the building licenses for the bottom three, um, uh, vendors as well, and all of those licenses are current. Uh, I spoke with Deb Moore, um, and offered my recommendations. She was gonna check to see if funding is still available, uh, to get this work done. Uh, but my recommendation is to go with Cornerstone Building Services for twenty-one thousand six hundred and thirty dollars.
Um, normally with these things, we would wait for a vote from the board of, of the golf course advisory committee. And then we would vote on it. So if we can get a vote from them soon, uh, James, then uh, perhaps next week when we meet, we.
Well, if, if Deb's board, um, has the funding to support this, then, uh, I think they could just put it through.
Just put it through themselves.
Yeah. Is that your understanding, James?
Yes, that is my understanding.
Okay, great.
She was gonna make, uh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say, so this is for, for our information only, no action required this evening?
That's correct. Just, uh, informing you what's going on. Uh, Debbie was gonna check with, um, the, um, Sharon to believe, with Sharon, I believe, to understand how much money is available.
All right.
Thank you very much. Any questions for our facilities manager from the conference call?
I think he has something else to add.
Any more, um, discussion, James?
Uh, yeah, I do wanna touch quickly, uh, on the, uh, maintenance management software, uh, system, uh, that I took
Okay.
last time we spoke. Uh, have narrowed, uh, it down to, uh, one vendor, um, and I plan on, uh, presenting tomorrow night to the FinCom to, uh, to inquire about a line item transfer from my salary line. As you know, I started halfway through the year, so half of my salary is, is, uh, um, still available. Uh, and I would like to use that, um, uh, excess, uh, in my salary, uh, budget line to fund, uh, the software, the purchase of this software. To just, uh.
So have you, have you sent that request in writing to, to, uh, Jeff for, um, a reserve fund transfer request, James?
I did, uh, inform Jeff, um, and I don't know what the outcome of that is.
All right, so we'll, we'll act upon that when we get the transfer request, um, from Mr. Ritter.
Okay.
I don't think, I don't think, I think those are all department head, uh, others, Mark.
Okay. No, I don't see it here in the folder either, so we'll have to address that next week.
Okay.
Right.
That's, uh, that's it for now. I'm back on, I guess, at the end of the meeting.
Thank you. And moving on to the Nine Green Street Committee update.
Mark?
Yes.
This is Sharon. I'm sorry to interrupt, but I didn't know how to unmute my phone until I got in touch with Mary. I'm just, I'm referring back to your vote early, earlier in the meeting when you voted a one-twelfth budget for July. That is not enough money. In July, we're running the end of the year warrants for the, end of this fiscal year and the new fiscal year at the same time. We make our payments for the county retirement. We pay the entire thing. We pay our liability insurance. July alone, we spend ten million dollars.
No, we didn't vote on, we didn't vote on it yet, Sharon, but I'll, I'll have John explain to you.
So Sharon, basically what the one-twelfth guideline provides us, and I see Mr. Talam and is still with us, he can add color if needed, is not less than one-twelfth will be the prepared budget. So in the event that we require more for reasons that are explainable, we can do that.
Okay.
So, yeah, I, I had sent you an email just asking for the opportunity to speak with you tomorrow and start working on the, um, the structure of what this looks like. But I understand that there are some large one-time payments that go out in July. And I think we can account for that in our report to DL, DLS. Um, so I, I don't think we're, I don't think you have a problem here at all. It does not have to be exactly one-twelfth. It has to be not less than one-twelfth. Is that correct, Jay?
Yeah.
I, I just wasn't sure how you voted it. I thought you only voted one-twelfth, not.
No. No, we asked, we voted to ask you to prepare a one-twelfth budget report for all town departments, a model that we can look at to see what that report may look like by the time it gets to DLS. Um, the one thing we failed to do is to put a timeframe on it. Sharon, it'd be great if you had something like this for us within the next week. Um, if that's not achievable, um, let us know.
Okay. No, I can work on that.
We just wanna be prepared, basically.
Correct.
Okay.
To be able to ma- make decisions. So if we could have it for next Monday evening's meeting, that'd be great.
I think Jay was about to confirm what I said. Is that correct, Jay?
It is correct. Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Okay, yep. Just make sure we, we didn't do something we couldn't stay within the.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Um, and we are on the Nine Green, Green Street Committee update. Is there somebody from that committee that would like to talk? Tina?
Yeah, so Mark, could I just, um, propose that, given that we're under new, uh, board business now, that we move up the Memorial Day parade discussion to be the first item under board business? We have Steve Bradford here, uh, who's.
Sure.
If we could, would you be opposed to doing that?
No, let's, why don't we do that? Go ahead, Steve.
Good evening. And I'd like to start by thanking Mrs. Heine for, uh, letting me know that we were on the agenda for tonight. I had no idea. Um, I've been in contact with, um, Chief Cassidy and others about what we could do for Memorial Day. Chief's been very supportive of, uh, my ideas. I wanted to wait another week before we got to any decision. And, um, if, you know, as to what we were gonna be able to do for Memorial Day, I was hoping to get a little more guidance from, uh, Francisco Urana's office. But, uh, that's not coming till the end of the week, and I don't think it would actually change anything at this point. My recommendation is gonna be that, um, and this really hurts me to, to do this, is that we not have a Memorial Day parade today, uh, this year. That we have a virtual, um, Memorial Day ceremony that would be filmed by H-CAT. Uh, we will still put up the, um, the flags downtown. Um, we will recognize any of our fallen comrades since, um, Veterans Day. And rather than having all the scouts go out with us the Thursday before Memorial Day to help us dress all the graves, that, uh, a small number of veterans would take that on. And we would do it over the course of the week, just so that we don't have any, um, social distancing problems. Um, it really hurts not to be able to, uh, honor the fallen um, without, you know, the parade and the ceremony. So, um, we will send out, uh, invitations to people such as the Board of Selectmen, Representative Dyckma, Senator Spilka, uh, Chief Cassidy, Chief Stone, uh, two members of the clergy, and, uh, the commander of the VFW and myself, and we will, uh, do a virtual ceremony that, uh, our fellow veterans in the rest of the town would be able to view. So, um, of course, that's all with, uh, as we are an appointed committee. And I think that only three of us were appointed this year because running into all the COVID issues and maybe only two of us were sworn in. But, uh, I'm a self-appointed chairman and, uh, with the, um, boards, with the select board's permission and blessings, we'll go ahead with that.
Okay. Um, questions, Tina?
No. Thank you. Steve, John?
No, I don't. I share Steve's disappointment. Um, however, I think under the circumstances, there's not a lot of options. I, I do wanna note that many of the, um, volunteers that Steve works with, um, from the VFW are, are individuals who, um, would probably be better off. Yeah, I'm concerned about their health, of course, so regrettably, I think it's the right move to make at this point. But, um, you know, everybody's gotta stay safe and healthy. That's job one.
Just wanna say that the American Legion and the VFW, not just the VFW.
Thank you, Steve. Yep.
Yes, and please thank them all for us, for all that they do every day for all of us. And I'll take the motion, yeah.
Um, do you want the motion to postpone or?
Motion to accept his idea about virtual.
Do we need a, do we need a vote on that?
I don't think so.
I think he was looking for some sort of, um, okay to do that.
A consensus?
Yeah.
Uh, well, I'll offer consensus opinion and a motion that, uh, we allow for virtual, um, Memorial Day celebration for this year.
You have a second, Mrs. Heine?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
No.
Okay. Nine Green Street update, please, Mrs. Heine.
Yeah, I'll make it quick. Um, we were supposed to have a memo, a letter, rather, for this board to review. It did not end up in the agenda packet. I don't believe it was forwarded last minute, so you haven't had a chance to look at it. But we have a letter to DEP. Um, it'll have to be on next week's agenda. Um, we're, we're asking for an update on the request to change the eligible person status for Nine Green Street. Um, we need to clear the way to address compliance issues. So that'll be coming next week. I'll talk to Jeff about that. Um, the draft report from the LSP, the licensed site professional that we hired.
Could I interrupt a second? Um, one, one question real quick.
Yeah.
Uh, Tina, this is John. Um, there is a letter in the file.
Oh.
Address, addressed to Stephanie Kelly.
That's right. Okay, great. I didn't see it come across as an email. So that's the, the letter. If this, if we, uh, approve it, then we would send that off to DEP.
John, would you read it?
Let me read it, Tina. Date of May fourth, twenty twenty, to Stephanie Kelly, Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. Uh, subject Nine Green Street, Holliston. Ms. Kelly, the town of Holliston is requesting a status update in order to make progress on the Tier One extension for Nine Green Street. We are seeking to reset the response action deadlines for the site. An eligible person status request was submitted with a BWSC one-twenty-six form with attachments, including a letter from the town indicating that this is the non-LSP submittal, along with a BWSC one oh seven eligible person request form. These documents were submitted in January twenty twenty. The town is awaiting verification from DEP to qualify as an eligible person, resetting response deadlines and change of compliance status. The site is currently classified as Tier One D default. The town hired Lord Environmental Incorporated, LEI, to continue response actions for the site. LEI is currently conducting additional assessment sampling activities and is awaiting the change in eligible person status from the Department of Envir- the Department of Environmental Protection prior to submitting a Tier One extension. Please advise on the status when you get a chance. I'd like to make a motion to endorse this correspondence to the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection on behalf of Nine Green Street.
Do we have a second, Mrs. Heine?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Just two real quick things then left here. Um, the LSP report, the draft report suggests that demolition of the building is the most reasonable, um, solution, most reasonable next step. Um, as long as there's no digging into the ground, a demo would be without any restrictions. Given this assumption, when the time comes, I will need an article for the associated cost of the demolition. Um, the feeling is that this can absolutely wait until fall town meeting. Um, we are awaiting an update from Scott Moles on how much money is left from that reserve trans- reserve fund transfer. I don't know if you remember or not, but it was to employ the, to hire the LSP. Um, we're waiting to see how much of that is left after this draft report was completed. So, um, moving forward, we will likely need a line item for FY twenty-one for additional LSP work. Um, when you read the report, you can see that there's additional testing and ground wells that need to be installed. So that's some. So that's something we'll have to get back to once we get the update from Scott Moles on how much is remaining in the, that thirteen-five for the LSP. And then last thing we're waiting.
So this, so this should be on the agenda next Monday night, too.
That'd be great. Well, so we can take the letter off. We just approved that, that's fine. And then hopefully Scott Moles will have an update on how much is left. And we can get that update perhaps during the town administrator report next week. And then the last thing is we're meeting again on May 7th. So Thursday this week, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the audience to regarding the Nine Green Street update for Mrs. Heine? Okay, we'll move on to appointments of governance committee. We have Christina Lingham. Do we have a motion?
Motion to appoint Christina Lingham to the governance committee.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All of them favor it?
Aye.
Both.
Motion carries, thank you. Next is capital request policy. John, do you want to read the existing policy?
Existing policy?
Hello?
No, just interrupt for one second. I'm sorry, John. Last week, Jeff asked us to hold on any decision on this, any action on this, awaiting input from those who had questions, concerns about having revisions made. I haven't seen any of that input.
Well, that's why it's on the agenda, so that they can ask questions tonight. So if you would read the policy.
The existing policy states, background, this policy is intended to codify existing past practices for capital items that request at the October Special Town Meeting or the May Annual Town Meeting. The policy description includes all boards, committees, commissions, and departments elected and appointed are to follow the procedures outlined below when there is a need for capital appropriation at town meeting. Failure to follow these procedures will result in your request to be stricken from the town meeting warrant before publication. Number one, at least two months before a town meeting, communicate your capital needs to the town administrator and the finance committee in writing, including bid results or price quotations. Number two, the town administrator will schedule a meeting with the Board of Selectmen for the purposes of reviewing your capital needs. This will be done at least forty-five days before the town meeting. Number three, the town administrator will recommend to the Board of Selectmen a list of capital needs thirty days before the start of town meeting. Number four, Board of Selectmen, at least one month before the start of town meeting, if not before, will vote on the town administrator's recommendation and refer the vote of the board to the finance committee. Number five, the Capital Improvement Committee, a subcommittee of the Finance Committee, will meet and recommend a list of capital needs to the Finance Committee, who will vote at least three weeks, if not before, the start of town meeting. This particular policy was voted May 20th, 2019.
Thank you. Okay, are there any questions about the capital request policy from the residents? Mrs. Heine, do you have any comments that anyone shared with you concerning this policy?
I was just given some feedback from members of the school committee to say that the language was, was, sorry, the timeline can be rigid, given their own constraints with the information that they get and what they have to work with. And they were looking for, if I interpret it correctly, was hoping to get this from the school committee directly. But if I interpret their committee comments correctly, they were looking for a little bit of a softening of the language. And in, to that effect, the edits that I had proposed for this policy were to, to do just that and to kind of reinforce the advisory policy. So no, that's all I have to add.
John, any comments?
Well, Tina, I think I have edits that I'm going to guess you contributed to, which were to strike the language. Failure to follow these procedures will result in your request to be stricken from the town meeting warrant before publication. And then there were two other additional sentences that were added to describe how the annual capital request should follow and so forth. What benefit does it have to strike the language regarding failure to follow these procedures will, will result in your request to be stricken?
My, my feeling is that it would signal to someone, a committee like the school committee, that there's some flexibility. Again, I'm interpreting their comments. I don't have them in writing. They are obviously not here on this call to share them directly. But I interpreted their comments to be looking for that softening of language.
Interesting. Mr. Chairman, I don't find any compelling reason at this time to change the language. I would invite the school committee or a representative to come before us and make a case for changing the language. I, with all respect to Ms. Heine's report, I don't see that need at this time.
Okay, very good. Anything else, Tina, you want to talk about with the capital request policy?
No, the two that were additions were just to bring it in line to highlight the fact that we're following the Special Acts of 1994 here, that it's pretty well defined in the Special Acts how the capital process is supposed to go. And so those two additions are just kind of pulling that into the document to reinforce that this is coming from, driven by the, the Special Acts of 1994. So that's what those two edits were for. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, we have some meeting minutes to accept for April 13th. Regular and executives, do we have a motion proposed or?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of April 13th, 2020, both regular session and executive session.
Do we have a second?
Second with a question. Are we to release or not release the executive session meeting minutes at this time?
I, I do not have a note here to release the executive session meeting minutes.
I would, I would caution Mr. Ritter to inform us when he wants us to release executive session minutes to make that note. So at this time, can we hold on the executive session approval unless we be releasing something that is not appropriate?
Yes.
So I'll make the motion to accept the April 13th regular meeting minutes and ask Mr. Ritter to get back to us on the executive session ones.
Do we have a second?
Sure, I'll second.
All of them favor it?
Aye. Aye.
Both, motion carries. Donations, senior center and parks to parks.
Tina, I have that information here.
Great, okay.
The senior center is receiving from Holliston Superett in support of the senior nutritional program, $400, which is quite generous. Make a motion to accept the $400 as a donation from Holliston Superett.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All of them favor it?
Aye. The park, our Parks and Recreation folks are prepared to accept $3,000 from the Holliston newcomers and neighbors for the Holliston Concert Night at Goodwill Park.
Do we have a second?
We have, I will second it, but I just want to point out Mark Frank is here and I believe he's prepared to speak about this donation.
Yeah, I would love to, I would love to, can I, can you hear me?
Yes.
I'd love to publicly offer thanks to the newcomers. I was hoping the board, I know it's late and you guys have been at this for a while, but would also allow me to just give a quick update on the status of the parks if you are willing to.
Absolutely.
So parks, playgrounds, court fields, and beaches do remain closed at this time. That, those closures are in a constant state of revaluation. We've been seeking and encouraging input from emergency management and Board of Health. If there's any indication that changing of those policies would benefit, I know there's been talk about overcrowding on the rail trail. If there's evidence to show that what we're doing is not in the public interest, we are interested in, you know, hearing all parties out. So I just wanted to publicly state that we're acting in what we think is in the interest of everyone in the community. If we get information that indicates otherwise, that will be taken into consideration immediately. I don't know if the board has any thoughts on that.
Difficult position. No, I, I think we have to support what you're doing, Mark. You know, I think folks are going to become increasingly restless from a recreational standpoint. But I've been saying from day one, we have to take it one day at a time. These are difficult, difficult, social and economic times. Patience is the key. I know the motivation behind your, your rules are to maintain public health and I, I fully support them. And I think that's where we have to be on this. Just be patient.
Tina?
I'm just going to confirm, Mark, that the decision to close the parks was based on your board's vote. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do you, do you collaborate at all or have discussions with the Board of Health? When you, you must, when you're making these decisions, okay?
Yep. Absolutely.
Mr. Cassidy, do you have anything you want to add to this?
No, I'm in frequent contact with Mr. Frank and support his and his board's decision-making process. And as soon as we get updates from the state and federal officials, I'm always passing them on in a timely manner.
Okay, thank you.
We're, we're expecting a guidance also from the state on summer programming. We were hoping to have that by now, but it looks like middle of the month we'll get that. So trying to discern the financial impact on our department is nearly impossible with the many variables that we have. We're currently exercising basically what Representative Spilka was discussing earlier in terms of scenario planning, where we're planning, you know, we're planning as if camp is going to happen. And, you know, we're planning if camp is going to happen with all these different copy ops, with social distancing matters in place. So we're doing the best to be prepared for multiple different scenarios, but we'll just have to happens there. And I have one last thing, in addition to thanking newcomers. We have to cancel all of our spring programming. Huge majority of people who had registered for spring programs took their refunds in the form of a credit, which helps us kind of just spread out the financial impact that would have on our department. And we can't tell the community how thankful we are for their help in supporting our department. In that way, really, it's touching how many people responded positively to that. So we just wanted to say how much we appreciate that as well.
Great. And I don't think we made the second motion for the newcomer grant yet, did we?
I'll second the motion to accept the.
I just want to clarify, Mark, it is one grant for $3,000, is that correct?
That's correct. It's for the summer concert series, which is obviously up in the air. But like I said, we're planning as everything is going to happen in case it does. So that's where we're at.
So second on that, Mr. Chairman.
All of them favor it?
Aye.
Aye, both, motion carries, thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Mark. Okay, Town Hall protective glass for officers, Mr. Keith.
Yeah, so I reached out, let me pull it up here in a second. To six glass and mirror companies local to Holliston. Received one quote back. And the, the plan is, maybe I should back up and explain the request. There are six service windows at the, the Town Hall. Two downstairs in the basement and four upstairs, all in varying widths. Anywhere from six feet all the way up to close to thirteen feet. And they, they're, they're completely open with the exception of nighttime barriers that, that, you know, come down when, when it's not stacked. But they're completely open to, to the offices behind the counter. The thought is to put up glass barriers. And these are things, I think someone had mentioned something that's similar to what you would see in a bank. Not going to be.
Yeah, I think, I think Mary Brusque, the town treasurer, was, was the one that initiated this, which sounds like a very good idea.
That's, that's correct. You know, these are going to be quarter inch thick glass. It's going to be laminated. It's not a, a safety glass that would break into tiny pieces, but it's actually laminated glass like the front of your, our windshield that if it does get, again, it's going to stay together. It will just show these sort of spider webs on there. The thought is, depending on the width, but we would have the two end panels on the, on the counter. So if you're facing the counter, envision a panel on the right, a panel on the left that has a gap on the bottom of about anywhere from eight to 12 inches, then a piece of glass. And then at the above, six inches or so would be exposed. So there would be, in effect, a piece of glass at someone speaking or head area when they're, you know, at the counter. To help accommodate folks that may be accompanying and a concern that came up is that if a parent comes in with a child that's possibly at that counter height or a little above, that there would be no protection from that scenario. So in the center, we would be putting full-length glass panels that would go from the bottom of the counter all the way up to the top. Depending on the width of the counter, that, that center section may be two panels in width. But on the ends would be these stripped panels where there would be about a foot or so on the bottom and six inches at the top. And like I said, I reached out to six companies. One of them has gotten back to me. I'll hear back from the rest of them this week.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad that's moving along.
Yeah, no, it says progress. And I, and I go back to my earlier remarks with Chief Cassidy. This is the kind of safe return to work element that should be in the plan.
Yeah.
And obviously what Mr. Keith is doing is going to cost money.
Right.
It's got to go to the Finance Committee to source some kind of solution.
So if you could work with Chief Cassidy and help direct the moles, that'd be great. Okay, James?
Okay, absolutely.
Thank you very much. All right, year-end transfers, salary adjustments, Jane Talman.
Okay, so kind of an issue that's been hanging around for a while and one that we made some significant progress on over the last two days, working with DOR on this. It's been a source of disagreement and confusion on the, on the legal side for a while. I'll just give some history and then we'll backfill that into the, into the law.
Okay.
Leading up to the annual town meeting last year, last May, there was an, an obvious discussion that was going on about some burgeoning negotiations with department heads and how those would be accounted for. Those negotiations weren't going to be complete by town meeting. So they couldn't be, any increases in the line items for department heads couldn't be allocated to specific line items because you didn't know what they would be. And some might get too much and some might get too little and it'd be hard to move around. So there was discussion by the selectmen. And then there's discussion by and between the treasurer and the FinCom Chair, who were trying to find a, a place for that. Emails on May 2nd, I believe it is, between the FinCom Chair and Mary essentially indicated, where are we going to put this? And the decision was said, they mentioned a couple line items that said, let's make a decision where to put it. It was a clear indication on their part that they would have to segregate that money because it would have to be allocated later after the negotiations. But there was a specific intention to provide that money to be spent in the budget. Fast forward to just a few days to the date of town meeting. And that decision was actually made, the date of town meeting, the FinCom minutes of town meeting indicate that they reconciled that by deciding to put that $75,000. There would be paying for the budgets to be, those salary line items to be negotiated in the benefits package that's indicated in their minutes, which I reread again today. Then at the town meeting itself, so let me back up a little bit. So the benefits line item was roughly 1.5 million, a little bit more than that, but 1.5 million. And that was a traditional line item. It's been largely used for certain benefit payouts, but it's, it's, the use of that fund has been a little bit of a jack-of-all-trades over the years, although primarily used for benefit payouts for retiring and other employees. There was no effort to raid that amount. And the amount carried forward for this current fiscal year was essentially equal to the prior year, FY '19, but with a little adjustment for cost of living, inflation, everything else. The $75,000 was going to be. The $75,000 was going to be on top of that. There was never an indication that, hey, we'll just grab that money that exists that we allocate every year. Uh, again, so there was the firm indication that that number would go up by 75. That is evidenced further by the fact that the written FinCom report, um, mentioned the 1.5 million, but by the time we got to town meeting, on the floor of town meeting, it was increased to roughly, I, I think at the time around 1.6, but 75,000 more than what was in the FinCom report, which was published and printed before the FinCom Chair and then the FinCom by unanimous seven, nothing vote decided to increase that number by the 75,000. During his preliminary remarks on town meeting floor, the FinCom Chair essentially reiterated all this for the benefit of town meeting, who would be looking at a line item that would actually be different than what was in their recommendation to the tune of 75,000 and explained, um, on, I re-re- re-reviewed the video of town meeting today at the request of DOR to make sure that in fact, there was an effort to alert town meeting as to what they would be voting on and why there was a discrepancy. And he indicated clearly that it was an adjustment by $75,000 to address salary things. Uh, it's made a little more confusing by the fact that the, an early article essentially changed the wage and personnel bylaw, but Section 27, I believe of that bylaw specifically states that the selectmen have the authority to negotiate those contracts. And that's what he was referring to was the ability to, or cognition of the fact that there would be $75,000 more, um, that would be subject to negotiation. So again, still tying up loose ends, letting the voters know at town meeting why the printed recommendations were $75,000 like. Then moving forward to the actual discussion of the budget, the moderator, uh, Bill, um, his approach to the budget was to take an omnibus motion and then to take little mini, uh, votes on each line item. Um, that take, takes place over an hour at least. And he went methodically through each line item and they were voting where there was discussion or concern by their officials or town meeting. People would get up and discuss individual line items. When he got to, and I again watched the tape of it, when he, when he got to that line item, there was some hesitation because there were some literally handwritten changes, um, as directed by the FinCom Chair and as approved and endorsed by his board as well as the Select Board, uh, that there would be a change to 75,000. So he backed up, went forward, the FinCom Chair again went to the microphone to affirm that this change was in fact what he was talking about previously, um, during his opening remarks about the budget. So again, giving town meeting voters a second opportunity to understand what they were voting on, which was an increase in a traditional line item so that we would have a placeholder for after those, uh, uh, department head budgets were, um, negotiated. Okay. So moving after town meeting, there was some concern raised as to by the time we approached the fall and had to, we're getting the, um, the, a lot of these were negotiated and we're getting to the point where we're having to spend it. There was a question as to whether or not we would have to, um, uh, transfer. And my opinion, and that, that opinion holds true today, it's been tempered a little bit by, um, an interest in making sure the DOR is satisfied. My opinion at the time was no, this was specifically laid out for that. It doesn't matter what you call the budget, all that matters is what you intended that budget line item to be. I retain that opinion today, especially because there was a clear intention by all the parties to do exactly that. There was never an intention or never a notation to town meeting that there'd have to be a, a subsequent transfer. That money was available for expenditure at that time. Nevertheless, as we headed into the spring, there was some discussion that, well, maybe it'd be just easier given the continuing disagreement because there was a discussion by the town accountant with DOR based upon information available to the town accountant at the time, which I don't believe included everything that I just laid out. Uh, but at least based upon the conversation I had with DOR today, that there was a reluctance to do the transfer. So we were going to follow the, the safest and easiest path of least resistance and just move for a transfer so as to avoid any kind of uncomfortableness about using the money. So that would have occurred in the May annual town meeting, which is postponed, obviously. So with the postponement, those salary line items for those department heads are running out because they are contractually entitled to the money that, uh, we negotiated. So they've been getting paid, so their salary line items are running out. So to avoid the possibility of laying those people off, we then follow the next step or the selectmen's interest is following the next step, which is to request a FinCom, uh, or request the FinCom's approval of a line item transfer even again. And I've made, I, I've been steadfast about this, that it's not necessary. In fact, I wrote an opinion, confidential opinion to Jeff Ritter and the board in December saying that it was not required with attachments of all the emails and the budget notations by the FinCom and everything else. But if the FinCom would agree to the line item transfer, it's the same money and, um, it would happen. Uh, I believe that that's what you have in front of you today. And I think from a belt and suspenders approach, it makes sense perhaps to still make that request. But to be clear on what, um, is before us, I, I went to DOR myself. And I did this on Friday and I spoke to the chief, uh, legal counsel at DOR. Um, DOR took a slightly nuanced position on my position and said that, okay, all the history that you laid out is good. And it certainly shows that there was some intention outside of town meeting to, um, account for these monies and by placing them in this budget. However, did the leg- because this information wasn't available to DOR at the time, did the Legislative Assembly know what was going on? Was there cognition by the people that were actually voting on it that a line item that's traditionally not used for department head salaries would be used for that purpose? And that's when I again reviewed the town meeting video today and then confirmed with DOR that in fact, in two, uh, points in time within the, the town meeting itself, the FinCom Chair himself, uh, outlined for town meeting what he had intended all along for those budgetary line items, thus giving the town meeting the opportunity to question it, vote it down, approve it. As we all know, they approved it without comment, uh, after he made those, uh, notations. So in my opinion, even based upon the DOR's, uh, interest in making sure that town meeting, um, was further informed, again, I didn't think that was necessary, but DOR said that that's was, would be their general practice is to tie all the background information together with an actual, um, uh, evidence that town meeting knew what they were voting on. So after I viewed the video, I then sent that information off to, uh, DOR and said to them that this is the information you were looking for and it supplements my opinion. And I was prepared to opine that that money could be accessed now, today, based upon the fact that there was one and a specific intention, um, to do it and that there was a good reason to do it because we didn't know what those line items were. And then further that town meeting itself was fully aware of the process, which had been vetted by all the powers that be. So even in supplementation of my prior opinions, which I've made throughout the course of this, I think my, uh, opinion is even stronger today than it was then. And that, um, I think those monies could be accessed today and that is my opinion. I, I hope to, um, maybe perhaps dot some i's and cross some t's with DOR, but they certainly didn't, after I emailed them today, didn't dispute, um, the evidence that I further provided to them and suggest when, when I suggested to them that it certainly, um, uh, tied up the loose ends in terms of what their general standard is. So I based, um, all of this on what they told me to base it on. And I feel comfortable as town council stating that that money is available today. But I still recommend, as I think I mentioned in some emails with John earlier, that it might be a belt and suspenders approach to ask the FinCom Chair or the FinCom, uh, for approval of the line item transfer. But even without that, I think the, uh, that money could be freed up to pay for the balance of this fiscal year. Those department head salaries, I feel very confident in that, uh, opinion. And, um, you know, failing that or failing tying this off, it would really, uh, cause significant harm to those, uh, particular departments, obviously, because we wouldn't, for two crucial months where we're, uh, developing perhaps a 112 budget, we wouldn't have those department heads available to us. So I'll take questions. I know there was a lot of information in a very short time.
Thank you. Um, questions for town council?
Um, yeah, just probably to summarize more than anything else, but I'm, I'm hearing you say that your research, um, most recently, but even back to the fall and into December, your research, um, satisfies in your opinion, DOR's nu- nuanced comments uh, about what it takes to, um, justify the, the transfer that we're talking about. So I read your email earlier, I read all your emails, um, but DOR's comments are the need to, um, show that there was discussion at town meeting on the appropriation.
Right. Yeah, let's be clear, this is not a transfer. There are laws that say you can't transfer line items without approval of town meeting or an end of year transfer. This is not a transfer. This is a direct use of money that was appropriated for a specific purpose.
Okay.
John, any questions?
Is she, is Tina all set?
You all set, Tina?
Yeah.
Jeff, uh, rather Jade, thanks so much for your analysis and your work on this. Um, a couple of questions. Do you still have an expectation to hear, um, a final opinion from the Department of Revenue on this matter?
I, I, I don't know the answer to that question. Um, you know, normally, uh, Patricia Hunt and, and I've talked quite a bit about it. It, it's possible she's still looking at it internally, but she gave me marching orders and I responded by essentially saying, I'm assuming we're all set now. So I, I feel comfortable, might she come back, um, tomorrow and say yes or no? I did send her the link to the video. Normally when these things come up, they say, they don't get down in, in the weeds like that. They have that right, certainly. But, um, I, I didn't tell her I needed to hear from her, but I certainly said, let me know if you have any questions or remaining concerns. That was early today and I didn't hear from her for the rest of the day after. And she's been incredibly speedy in responding otherwise. So I, I'm assuming that they're largely okay with it, but I, I don't want to, uh, put words in their mouth either, John.
No, understood. Reason I'm asking is because, um, two of the department heads are slated to run out of cash according to a query by the town accountant on May 15th. Um, and then after that, about two other department heads per week through the end of June will encounter the same jeopardy. So I feel like we have a little bit of room to wait to have a final answer from DOR that they concur with your analysis and have no objection to the actions that we would like to take, I think, to, um, uh, draw this money into the department head salaries consistent with the town meeting vote. But I think we would need to hear something by next Monday night.
Uh, I think that's certainly a fair position to take, John. Uh, and I, I did note some disagreement with DOR today. Again, they don't, they're not a final arbiter of any particular law. One concern I, I did have with them is they seem to be leaning on the notion of what this budget line item may be, may be labeled and, and I understand why they do that. But there's no law that specifically addresses their, um, conclusion in these kinds of situations. It's really more of a practice tip. But a- a- absolutely, it would be great to have them 100% signing off. If the town accountant or the town treasurer had concerns and needed town council opinion as a backup, today I would unequivocally give that opinion. But, um, certainly, uh, waiting, uh, doesn't hurt you. I, I do think again, belt and suspenders might, uh, indicate that you still ask the FinCom for a contingency transfer. Because again, what we're talking about valued employees that are, will be instrumental as we develop FY21 budget.
And that could be done next week too.
The, the total amount of the transfer as it's currently slated is $49,011.88. Uh, and that is because several of the other departments have favorability within them in FY20 to cover the respective raises that were negotiated as part of this exercise to correct department head salaries, uh, to market conditions. Um, it occurs to me that as we discuss this, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I would like to briefly mention what type of FY20 increase each of these departments were slated to get. Um, in a, in a, in a manner of full disclosure, I mean, nobody's hiding anything here. We were looking to increase the town accountant's salary by $4,342.60, the town assessor by $7,689.29, the, let's see, I hope I get all these right. The town treasurer by $6,521.75, technology director by $4,418.50, conservation by $2,145.88, the planning board by $8,280.47, the economic development by $1,380.19, the fire department by $5,421.84, the ambulance department by $1,931.90, the building inspector by $2,343.31, administrative, uh, salary corrections, administrative assistant, I don't see what those increases are for. They're not department heads. Board of Health, $7,916.72, council on aging, $1,430.66, youth services, $975.17, the library, $7,284.2, recreation, $5,147.68. And then finally, what looks like a water enterprise fund, I'm going to guess that's the correction for the Department of Public Works, $1,033.03.
Did you mention a police chief?
He was, he's on a contract, so he's off this, he's off this grid. So these corrections were all based on a model that we put together, uh, as, as a, as a team a year ago to correct the imbalances. You can see there's a lot of numbers all over the place to bring the department heads into competitive salary with their peers around the communities, um, that we share.
And this was done, uh, relative with the, um, Collins Report. And, um, also it was found that Holliston's department.
The Stone Report.
I mean, the Stone Report.
Yep.
And Holliston's, uh, department heads were.
Right.
Were really low compared.
But we had, we had taken the task to remove the article in the fall uh, with the expectation that we could undertake the, um, movement of money pursuant to what Mr. Talaman is, is indicating. And I think if it's possible, legal, above board and clean as a whistle, um, we should follow through on that. But I would like to hear a final confirmation of that through Mr. Talaman from the Department of Revenue before, and if we undertake that. Is there any, if there's any hint that that is not possible, then we'll bring the transfer to the Finance Committee and explain it to them that, uh, without further action, we may be looking at up to 10 individuals who will not be paid their full salaries before the end of June, uh, of 2020.
Right. Um, and also we should mention that, um, um, originally the town clerk, uh, salary was part of the wage chart. And it was realized that hers had to be voted on at town meeting. So she was taken out of the wage chart, which brought it below the 75. Um, and we need to look at her salary at town meeting.
Right, there are a couple of articles to fix that.
To take care of her adjustment separately, uh, from the 75. So.
Correct.
Anyway, um, that's the history of the whole.
So I'd recommend that we, um, ask Mr. Talaman to follow through with the Department of Revenue to, uh, gain closure, uh, and clarity on our request. And if there's any misgivings on the part of DOR on this action, that we, um, we understand what they are so that we can, um, perhaps take an alternative course with the transfer. Presuming Mr. Talaman's advice is accurate, it certainly sounds like it is because I tend to agree with him. Then we can follow through with just instructing the town accountant to make this, um, make this money available in other departments' budgets without any further delay. But I, I think we can give him up to a. But I think we can give him up to a week, but as of May fifteenth, we're gonna run into some problems.
So that works for you, Mr. Talaman, one week?
Certainly.
John, this is Sharon.
Hi, Sharon.
And Mary.
Hi, Mary. Do you have questions for Mr. Talaman?
I know Mr. Talaman has had a discussion with Department of Revenue, and I have also had a discussion with Department of Revenue, and we have gotten two different answers.
Sharon, when was your most recent discussion?
Oh, I haven't talked to him in months, because I thought we were finally done with this conversation, that we were all on the same page, that we need transfers.
Let me get you up to speed. The council for D O R did speak to the rep that you spoke to, and they outlined it, because they wanted to be on the same page, and that's when D O R then asked me, are there additional facts that would support the conclusion that town meeting knew what they were voted on? So that's when I discussed with them and provided them with the link to town meeting itself, as well as some of the other documentary evidence, including Ken's emails, the handwritten changes to the budget itself, the FinCom minutes, and some other items. So the effort was that they used what they discussed with you as a baseline, and then I supplemented it with additional information over the last couple of days to help address their, the concerns that the field rep made to you.
Okay, well, I would like to see all of that. I mean, as of two weeks ago, I was told to make all the transfers, which I have written up, and they have in front of them right now to actually transfer the money from that account to the budget, because we have never paid raises out of that line item. That line item is to buy people out when they retire.
Right, but there was a clear effort, and I think Mary knows this because she was on the emails, to put the seventy-five thousand dollars somewhere. That was seventy-five thousand dollars that was put somewhere, wasn't taking money out of that traditional benefits payout.
Oh, I under, I mean, we, we put the money there as a placeholder-
Right.
With the full intent to transfer it to departments as-
There's no evidence of that there was an intention for a later transfer. There's, that doesn't exist. I can't find any notation in any documentation from anyone that there would have to be a later transfer to subsequent town meeting, nor does the law support that you have to do that, as long as everyone's above board with what they did. None of the emails, none of the town meeting correspondence. In fact, the suggestion at town meeting was that we're adding seventy-five thousand dollars to address wage issues. So again, I'll provide you with the links to the town meeting, but no one ever said that there'd have to be a subsequent transfer. If that was the case, we wouldn't have appropriated it at all, if we would have to go back to town meeting. So that wouldn't make any sense. But I can give you all the notations to the information that I gave to D O R that supplements their file, and then we can go from there.
Okay.
Mary, any questions?
So my understanding is that once you get the final opinion from D O R, we will be taking the extra money for department head salaries out of these salaries for settlement accounts.
Well, that, that, that's in line with my opinion, yeah. Again, if the, if the FinCom wants to shortcut that by just approving the transfers, we could do it that way, too, and then we can avoid any disagreement. So I don't know whether D O R is gonna give me an official opinion, or whether they're gonna say, this is up to you, town council, based upon the information we have, this is your opinion to give, which they sometimes do as well. I just wanted to make sure that what I was providing to them lined up with what they would like to see. Again, I'm not sure I agree with them, but I wanted to satisfy their concerns, too, because I know that town officials rely on them. So I, that's what, what my goal was. So that they may give a firm opinion, they may say, you've addressed enough stuff, and now it's up to you to advise the town accountant. I don't know where they're gonna come out with that, but we have a week to play with.
John, when you were reading the list of salaries, the administrative ones, that's basically for the highway superintendent, because Sean is the so-called department head, and the highway superintendent is the assistant in the budget process.
Those amounts were six hundred eighty-nine dollars ninety cents, two thousand eight hundred eighty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents. Thank you, Mary.
You're welcome.
All right, can I ask, can I ask Mary a quick question? The economic development amount of one thousand three hundred eighty, who is that paid to? I, I'm assuming Karen Sherman, I was looking for confirmation of that.
That is correct. Her, her pay is a portion between the planning board and economic development.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions by Mr. Sparrow? Any questions by Mr. Murphy? Okay. Seeing none, we will wait to get an email from you, Jay, and then we will, we will disperse the email once we get it.
Great.
And thank you very much for your time.
Of course.
And just a final message to the department head, that we apologize for all of the confusion. Your raises were absolutely intended to bring you up to a median range, to show appreciation to you, and also to make sure the town is marketable, so when people retire, we're able to replace department heads with a marketable salary. So this is a very important process, and there was a lot of thought that went into it, and we, we felt bad that, that there was confusion and disagreement, but at the same time, the board felt very strongly that this was a, this process was done transparently, was done fairly, it looked at each and every department head, and those boards, the independent boards that are elected, voted on these raises as well. So they are documented, and they are contractual, and we want to live up to our agreements. So thank you very much, and Jay, we'll look forward to hearing from you, so. Now, is there any other business that you'd like to bring up, Mrs. Hine?
Yeah, Jeff, excuse me, I'm sorry. Just that there was a request to post a congratulations to Hollison High School graduates in front of town hall. I think that would go through Jeff, and I'll direct the person who made the request to contact Jeff, but just wanted to bring that up. I'm not sure if Jeff's gonna require, does this take a board vote to use town property for posting signs?
Yes, usually we do give permission for decorating of any sort.
Okay.
So I would think to be on the safe side, I will take a motion.
Okay, moved, moved to grant use of the town hall for a sign congratulating the Hollison High School class of twenty-twenty graduates.
Two or a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. John, any other business?
No, sir.
I don't either, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. We are now adjourned. Thank you, folks, for watching, and we appreciate your patience tonight for this very long period. Good night.